Are we six o'clock? We are. Okay, just a second while we, Kelly's gotta get his computer. Is Brent on? No, on. Cause I can't see on our screen, I can't tell if he's on or not.
Can you hear us okay Brent?
Not anymore, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Let's call the order, city council meeting for Alpine City, April eighth, twenty twenty five. We'll start with a roll call.
Jessica Smeon present.
Jason Thielen present.
Chrissy Hammond and present.
Kelly Law present.
Brent Rumler present.
Okay, we have Councilman Rumler joining us via Zoom. And we will have a prayer offered by Councilman Law, followed by a pledge led by Councilman Thielen.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful to be here in this city council meeting to conduct business on behalf of the citizens of Alpine. We pray that we may be guided in our decisions, make good decisions and that thy blessing will be upon our city, our fire and police and our city staff and all those who live here. And we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Well, the audience, please rise and repeat after me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start on our work session for the twenty twenty six budget.
Okay, um, we included in the packet here just a list of things kind of from the staff side and it's, it's includes, I think, all the things that we talked about when we had a retreat a few weeks ago and then just a few additional things that have we found out information on or whatever since then. So, um, for general fund priorities or items, for revenue projections, we had twenty-two new homes in two thousand twenty-four. We estimate about a fifty thousand dollar increase in property tax revenue for that new growth. With sales tax, and we'll, we'll have our financial report here a little bit later. But it's basically flat right now. It kind of goes up and down, just a little bit positive, a little bit negative from month to month, but it's pretty flat. Park tax revenue, we estimated a hundred and sixteen thousand. I really don't anticipate that changing much based on our sales tax projections. And then the fifth, fifth sales tax for transportation projects is estimated about eighty-six thousand. And again, it's anticipated to be flat. With the Lone Peak Public Safety District, we actually have a board meeting tomorrow morning where the tentative budget for the district will be presented just a month ahead of our cities and Highland Cities budgets. The current ask is about two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars increase for Alpine's portion of, of that. But that's, that's what's being presented and, and we'll see how everything goes tomorrow and we'll make any adjustments if needed. This is mostly for wages and staffing. Wage increases for the city, we're in the process of reviewing that data right now and we'll have more information probably by our next meeting. Staffing, one item to consider would be potentially moving our part-time communications and parks and rec person to a full-time. We'll have those numbers on what that would cost to do that. We did get our health insurance and, and our, you know, health and medical and dental back. Medical was, came back at seven point, seven point four percent. Contrast at the Highland and Lone Peak was twelve percent. Our dental came back at five percent and we haven't had a dental increase for a couple of years. I know last year it was zero. With garbage, we will be going into the second year of our new contract. Part of that was an annual kind of a cost of living increase tied to the CPI West Urban Index. And it was specified in there that we would use the January number from the previous twelve months and that came in at two point four percent. So we'll analyze our garbage rates and see if there needs to be an adjustment there. Last year, we didn't need to adjust rates, so we'll take a close look at that and have that information for the tentative budget. Projects, we'd anticipate street maintenance similar to what we've done in the past. We'll get to this project a little bit later in this next bullet point, but we do have the Canyon Crest project that will most likely split budget years FY twenty-six and twenty-seven. But we're only on the hook for about seven, seven point something percent of the cost of that project. So it's not going to be a, like a major hit to our budget. So I think we can still maintain our street maintenance at the level we have the last several years. With the fire station, and again, this is a, a budget item, or not a budget item, an agenda item for later on the agenda. But I, I feel like we're ready to move forward on this now. We've had some discussion on it and we'll get your input later in the meeting with where we're planning to go there. Estimated five million dollars, I think we can probably, because we've, this has been put off for a couple of years, we've had money in the budget, I think we can probably pull together around three million and maybe have a, like a two million dollar bond for that. The maintenance of city open spaces, this was approved in this current year's budget. We really haven't been able to get it off the ground just because of staffing, but we have done in-house and we did have one little project we paid someone to do. But our guys have went out and cleared some sidewalk areas and, and that kind of through the winter when the weather permitted. So we, we will be in a position where we're going to be better staffed moving forward. We're almost fully staffed. So we'll be in a better position to move that forward. And our new parks guy, he came from a background where he had over a million dollars in maintenance contracts with the company he worked for and so he's very keyed in on this kind of thing and, you know, they had multiple clients and their biggest client, or his biggest client was Springville City. So he has experience kind of on both sides. I think he'll work out well for us in a lot of respects. Three Falls Landslide mitigation. Again, we haven't been able to get this off the ground, but we're very close to being staffed with an engineer that can help us move that forward. Something we need to discuss for this coming budget year are what our priorities are for the park tax funds. We, you know, we're, this will be our second year collecting those funds and I think we just need to make sure we pick projects and, and spend those since we are collecting them. We've had operational parks, security cameras at two of our parks, mostly just around the restroom since late last week. So we're just kind of getting our feet wet on how that all works and then we anticipate wanting to expand that in the coming budget year. The one, one issue we are having, it's just, it's kind of a delay when you go to look at it. We can look at it from our phone through an app. But they're using cradle points at the sites and it's just, it's like super slow getting the video to buffer and be able to see what you're wanting to. So eventually, I think we can get better internet at the parks and have that, that work better. But it's still there, they're recording, it's just the amount of time it takes to review footage, so. And with the system, we will be able to, you know, if we have an incident, we can package up a video, send that to the police department so that they can use that in any investigation of crimes or vandalism or anything that takes place. So those cameras are at the Burgess Park restrooms and concession area and the two restrooms at Creekside Park. Streets projects, we have the Canyon Crest Road improvements, as I mentioned, it will most likely cross budget years. So we'll get a cost estimate based on the estimate when the grant was applied for and apply some inflation and, and use that in our budget. We'd anticipate design probably starting later this year on that and we'll coordinate with Highland City for that project. Again, the street maintenance, probably around eight hundred thousand dollars between classy road funds and, and other funds that we have available. Other street projects, the concrete replacements and trip hazard removals are just something we do some every year as they're needed. Trip hazard removal, we just pick an area. A lot of times it's where we're doing overlay projects and, and focus on that and just make our way around the city. The other one I'd mentioned before is potentially the improvement of Grove Drive from Alpine Boulevard North to what used to be the ninety-degree bend. It's sometime soon, I feel like we need to make a decision if we're going to do that. If we're not, we probably need to overlay the street. And, and we need to coordinate with Lehigh City on replacement of a, a water line there.
And it's also power lines too, right?
Yeah, there is a power line. Did I mention that in the meeting before?
No, just.
Yeah, so there's, there's a bill or some kind of legislation that came out that the power company has to improve some of their system or it's a potential fire hazard. So two areas, they seem like two totally different areas to me, but two areas in Alpine that are for sure part of that are that area of Grove Drive and the old power line that goes up kind of parallels Four Creek going up Four Canyon. That one seems like a definite fire hazard and it's a very old power line. So it sounds like their fix for that is going underground and they would like to know if we plan on approving any of these streets that are in areas they're working on so they can get their infrastructure out of the way and not have to move it down the road. We talked about the water projects and just how we fund those and, and how we move forward with them. There is, I was in a meeting I think yesterday where the state has some funding opportunities for some water projects and we need to get on a list by at some date a couple of weeks out. So we'll work to get some projects on that and see if we can get some, some funding. Kind of the same with the pressurized irrigation, other than we do have this Canyon Crest Road pressurized irrigation line that's in the design process. We met, it was after our retreat. I think it was the following week, we met and kind of reviewed some potential alignments for that line with Horox engineers. With the sewer, we'd like to continue doing some video inspection outside of what the district gives us so we can keep on top of that. At the rate they're able to give us time now, we'll fall behind. So, and it's, it's money well spent. You can find problems before they're really problems and and do preventative work and our insurance company really likes that. And it's not like a, a huge cost either. Storm drain, we just have every year a few small capital improvement projects. We have one upon Fairview Court, which comes off of International Way that we need to do before we overlay that street. We actually have that project designed and as soon as we get our new guy, we'll, we'll get the project bid out and bring him back here for approval. With grants, we applied for two grants with the U org program. The Three Falls Flow Trails, which was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The grant would cover half that. And then the Corner Canyon Foundation agreed to pay the other half for the project. I got that right? So that would be a very low-cost project for us as the city. And then we have a grant, so that's applied for but not awarded. We've applied also for the Pavilion Grant that the council suggested as we worked on that, but they, they came back and said it really didn't fit. We thought it did, but it really didn't fit the category that we applied for. They thought it was more under playgrounds, which didn't make sense to us, but we'll know better next time. So that one is not really a possibility at this point. We do have a small grant from MAG to continue some ADA replacements this summer. So we'll work through that. A lot of that should happen in this, this budget year, but it could cross into the next. And then I mentioned before, we're proposing to replace thirty-five-year-old dump truck with a new ten-wheeler to make things more efficient when we're doing in-house work here, which we do a lot of.
What is a ten-wheeler? I don't even know what that is.
It's, it's a bigger dump truck. Like most of our, our dump trucks have a single rear axle. We do have one ten-wheeler that's equipped with snow removal, like a sander and a plow. This one, we wouldn't equip that way. It would just be a dump truck for hauling asphalt, gravel. You know, we can haul twelve or fourteen ton versus eight ton with our, our small dump trucks. And it would be available all the time because we usually have in the winter our trucks equipped with the, the snow removal equipment. So this one would be available for, you know, year-round use without breaking something down. And then probably a, a new pickup in public works and we're working through that. So those are just kind of the highlights of things that we think should be considered. And I want to spend most of the time to see if the council has any concerns with any of these that we need to work through and then any other priorities that you have that you would like us to put information and costs and things together to be considered in the budget. And what we would do, we have our, our spreadsheet, if you remember, it's real colorful. It's kind of highlighted with general fund and then each of the enterprise funds. Some projects are funded from more than one fund. Others are just solely from, from one of the funds. And then there's been some suggestions about kind of tying back what our fund balance is in each of those funds. You know what part of that would come from, fund balance versus kind of regular within the budget year revenue and we can, we can easily do that. So, once we have your kind of priorities, these, we can put those on our spreadsheets and then kind of work through and see if we have to cut some things that we can't really afford to do this year or how we plan for that in the future. Some things that aren't on here that we talked about were, are some of these master plans and we will add those on that spreadsheet. So we'll have some cost estimates for those. But most of those are coming out of restricted funds that we really can't use for too many other things anyway. So they're, they're not really impactful on some of these other projects, so.
I have one question.
Yeah.
How do, um, budget items that we put on our budget in the past that we still haven't done yet? Do those just go away or are those still budgeted based on best past budgets?
A lot of times we'll roll, I mean, fire, fire station's a great example. Just roll that forward to this next budget. And there's other projects on there and we can, we can bring that sheet and review those projects at the next meeting so you can see where everything stands. And then if you want us to roll those over, we can do that. Are there any particular projects that you want us to dive into and get some cost for?
The reason why I ask is I don't know how it plays in, you know, last year and the year before, we talked about the turnaround roundabout up there by the Poppies. Does that just go away if it's not in there? I mean, I'm trying to understand the process.
No, if the council tells us to put that back in, the way that project was handled before, it wasn't like, the council didn't say, we're for sure going to do this project, but let's put it in there and before we do it, let's bring it back for a vote. And then if we have a unanimous, or not unanimous, a major, a majority vote to move it forward, then, then we would get bids on it or, or however, if we were going to do an in-house, that would probably be a bid project, bring that back.
So we vote project by project or it's embedded in the whole budget?
It's, it's embedded in the whole budget, but there were a couple of things two years ago, so a couple of you that are on the council now weren't here, but that project was on and then it, you know, it never really was asked to be brought to councils. So there was that one and then there was what do they call them? The infrared fire detection cameras that Greg Gordon had asked if we'd consider and it was on there kind of the same way. The council didn't say, yeah, let's for sure do this, but it was kind of put in there as a potential project that would be voted on later. Usually they're not that way. We typically just have projects that are, yeah, let's plan on doing this. But that's how those two projects were put in there. And I think that was based on a council discussion at that time.
I mean, that's what's interesting to me is, I didn't know that, but apparently when we approved that budget, some of them are going to just happen because the city's going to take and do them and some of them might have an asterisk by them that says, well, if someone wants to do this, someone in the council needs to bring it back. And that's kind of.
Yeah, those are kind of the exception. Those are the only two projects I can think of that were that way. And my recollection is the council wasn't totally on board that those projects needed to move forward. But the kind of agreement was made that we'll put those in there and then bring them back at a later time, so.
I would think that was ever embedded in the budget and we vote on a budget is kind of the plan.
Yeah.
So that's good, good to know.
That, that's just how those two happen. Like I said, they, they are a total exception to what is normally the case.
I, um, was visiting a neighboring city and I noticed they had a sign. They enlarged a parking lot or something like that. I can't remember exactly, but they said this is coming from park funds. So we did bring that to the voters. I wasn't on the council, but I was running for election at the time and it was on the ballot. So I thought that was a really good idea to just, we brought something to the voters. They supported us and then, like you said, like I was looking through the budget, which we'll get to. Like we haven't designated anything to spend in the current year and so.
We did.
Oh, we haven't spent it yet, I should say.
We haven't spent it yet. The, uh, it was the Pavilion at Burgess Park.
Okay, so there we go. So I do think like, can we design a sign to say, and thank you taxpayers for this, for this pavilion paid for by our park tax. Cause I thought it, it really like, would they, it's important to have transparency about what we're doing, especially when we got voter approval and so.
Yeah, so the only thing that's kind of held up the whole pavilion is not getting consensus on where it was going to be, right?
Yeah.
Because I think last council, there were some that wanted it down on the, was it south? Kind of on the other, like by the baseball fields further down that way. And then, you know, and then there was the proposal to switch the, you know, the volleyball courts and, you know, the pavilion. And then I think last work session, we changed it back. So it's always a moving target. And so for, they just didn't know where to, they're like, you guys need to come to a consensus because if we just do it, they didn't want.
Right, they'll be fallout from it.
Do that. And so we just need to be consistent in our messaging.
I, I think though, it's important though to, to Jason's point that like, I'm, I fully understand that if I didn't vote on something, that I'm still bound because the council is, you know, speaking for me till I'm elected, right? And even when I'm not elected anyways. So how, I would like to sort of say, like, if we're going to do something, I want it to be clear that this is still gray. If it's not black and white, like I, I, if I didn't understand that, then like I, I want to make sure to Jason's point that if it's in the plan, like you guys, and that's our job too, is not to, if we didn't vote for that thing or that was not our baby, like we don't undermine the council decision and say, well, I really wish the pavilion were somewhere else. And we keep harping on that because that gives not clear direction to the staff and then things don't move forward, which is kind of where we're at, right? So I think it's a lesson to learn. But back to the park tax, where is, is where I started and I deviated here, that I do think we do something specific with it and I don't necessarily, we have a tendency as humans to want to see things and sometimes what we need is a program and you can't always, you know, see the program, but it may be beneficial, I think, from our surveys. It would be nice to, to wrap up some of our surveys and get some ideas about programs that they would like. We have this huge library people that are volunteers, but it's an arts, it's an arts ta- tax too, you know what I mean? So we could, I don't know what we need, but I do feel like we need to do, we, we need to be have something designated in the coming year. And I'm really also hesitant. I know it's only a hundred thousand dollars is park tax. There's lots, you know, we have a seven million dollar budget, but that, because we brought it to the voters, that's really my point. I did have a question about, you mentioned that the master, we, in our retreat, we talked about having a parks master plan. So is that something we need to, what do you need from us to feel like you can move forward with that?
I think we got the direction to move forward at our, our work session, so.
For twenty twenty-six, like starting in July or already in twenty twenty-five? Where do we fall? Where does that fall?
We would get it started now because if you remember, we, we committed to have certain things done by this fall due to the impact fee laws.
Right.
And so that was the plan. We have applied for a grant with that, but I feel like we need to just move it forward because timing-wise, we really need to get it done. And it's, it's worked into those impact fees. So if we can get the grant, great, maybe it can expand it. But I think we should move forward.
And not wait for budget to start and?
Well, I mean.
What are we, a July one start of the new budget?
Yeah, again, like that would come from the parks or recreation impact fees. So it's not really impacting the general fund or anything like that. And so it, it would just be handled under a simple budget adjustment at the end of the year.
That grant has a May seventh deadline too. That's what it's, we're already mostly done with it.
That grant has a May seventh deadline too. That's what it's, we're already mostly done with it, but yeah, we hopefully will know kind of around the same time, so.
Um, there was another question I had about um the fire station. We are talking about that later. But um, that's gonna cross years. So, do we take the money that we have and like that we were supposed to spend this year? And you, no, no surprises that I was the one who said, Shane, like I'd like to know how much we're spending from current funds versus fund balance versus these other resources. So, does that just like get, do we, remember at the end of the year, we have to transfer money out of the general fund to the capital? And then do we have things earmarked inside the capital improvements for something like the fire station?
They're not right now, but a line could easily be added in there.
Okay. Okay. Um, okay, cause I'll, I'll, I have another question about, but we'll talk about when we approve that or when we get to it on the agenda. Um, what was the other thing I was gonna ask? About, there was something in here. Oh, it was um, so if we start down, it's the fire station again. So, if we start down the road to build something and there's, you've just listed here, there's two million dollars for a sales tax bond. How, what's the approval pro- cause we don't like, you know, if we can't, do we have to go to the public for that? How do we, do we approve that? Do we hire? Like, how does that, and how long does that take? Is that something that will be in the twenty six budget, I guess, or are we gonna fund the end of the project with the bond?
You guys will tell us if it's gonna be in the twenty six budget, but we we would anticipate that. And it's not a super long process. As I remember, it's about ninety days.
Okay.
Um, there's a couple, like, I think there's a resolution we have to pass saying, you know, we're willing to have an interest rate up to this for this much money. It's called a parameters resolution. Uh, we passed that and then we just start moving forward and working with, uh, usually we work with Science Bank.
Okay.
They'll help us through that.
Science Finance.
Yeah.
And then, so the three million then, again, to my bigger picture of like, since we had already budgeted to do the fire station, is that just gonna move out of the twenty twenty five budget into twenty twenty six? Cause we already had it earmarked for twenty twenty five?
Coming from the general fund, if the council tells us to move that to the capital improvement fund and earmark it, that's, that's an easy thing.
We have the full three million in our current twenty twenty five year budget?
No.
Oh, it was not?
No, that would be combined, like what we, you know, like same sources this year, kind of the same amount of funding.
Okay.
Remains are coming from the capital improvement fund balance.
Okay, that's a huge, like five million dollar, like we only have a seven million dollar budget. So five million dollars, I'm just curious how this all um fits together, which we'll see on your colorful spreadsheet, which is still coming. Uh, what was the other thing I was gonna ask about this? I don't, I think it was at the beginning. Oh, now I remember. Okay, so this was a, another concern. I've already emailed Shane, but I was concerned, uh, not concerned, I was questioning, like, we have flat revenue. Every, every single bullet point here was telling us, I mean, property tax went up a little bit, miniscule amount for our twenty two homes. Um, so everything's flat, so how much, how much, like this is my question of when you budget, it's like, how much is like baked in because we have salaries? I mean, we're gonna have people here. We have projects like in our capital improvements thing that we're just gonna take. So what we're left with in my mind, and I could be wrong, is like the discretionary funds, you know? Because so, so much of the budget is just baked in with, you know, maintenance and salaries and just flat costs that we can't um, you know, choose from. So that was, with flat revenue, where do we come up with discretionary funds?
So the, the cushion we have is um, we dump projects from general funds. Um, a portion of the street maintenance funds have came from general funds, uh, and then some other projects. And so, as we chew up that kind of cushion, those funds contributing to streets would be less. And there are some different things we can look at to overcome that. Um, some cities have done a um, outside of a property tax increase. Some cities have done a transportation utility fee. Um, it's been kind of a hot topic in the legislature the last two or three years. Uh, Pleasant Grove got sued over theirs. It actually went to the state Supreme Court and they won.
That they could retain the fee?
Yeah, it it's, it was whether it's a tax or a fee. And Pleasant Grove said it was a tax. The group suing them said it was a, uh, or sorry, a fee. The group suing them said it was a tax. Um, Supreme Court agreed with Pleasant Grove and they, they won. So they kept collecting the fee, but didn't spend it while this was going through the, the court system. Um, Highland has a transportation utility fee. Uh, based on my understanding of where the legislation is now, they will probably have to redo theirs and approach it from a different angle. Provo's had one for years. Um, so that's something that we could consider going down the road. We just wanna make, I would hire the best person, like Zions or whoever is the best with working with those. Um, they call them toughs, uh, to kind of put our plan together and make sure it's bulletproof moving forward. So that, that's something we could do, uh, because over time, that cushion and the other part of the cushion is what has been transferred to the capital improvement fund
Right.
at the end of the year. So as pressure gets put on that cushion, it'll be reduced and then we'll have to do something.
Okay. So, based on what you're, you proposed here from staff, I haven't heard anyone else with like.
I've got a few things if you're done.
Okay.
Can I just make clarification on this? Do, so is this, is this gonna need a utility fee?
That was my question.
We'll know once we get the council's projects and we put everything together in the package to bring back for the tentative budget um in a month.
Are we able to move forward on the fire department without knowing if there's a fee or not? Meaning, if as a council, we decide that we do not believe in doing fees, there are just another form of taxes, that we don't wanna follow Highland's route? If we move forward with this discussion today without knowing if we're gonna have to add a utility fee, that, it seems a little.
I don't think the utility fee works to pay for a fire station, does it?
Not the fire station.
Separate.
It's, it's kind of replacing funds.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's moving. It's.
It's the same thing.
I see what you're saying. Yes, okay.
Yeah.
So, a better question then with all our, with the flat revenue and you've, you've given some other options to cha- to change the revenue, whether we go that route. Is everything that we proposed in this, or are we gonna have to pick and choose?
We, it may come to a point depending on what projects the council has, that we may have to pick and choose something. Um, but right now, I feel like at least for this year, that will be fine, but we'll know more once we plug everything in and.
So this is just the staff's list. Okay, I don't really, I don't have anything.
Yeah.
So I just um, I want a master plan for our parks and then we can start chipping away on all the things we talked about at our retreat. But until I'm, I'd rather have a master plan than just, you know, ad hoc do things, so. That's my input is, as long as, but you're saying that's not even a twenty twenty six budget item, so I don't have anything, so.
Go ahead.
So, relating to items we've already budgeted for and how do we make sure that they are moved into completion? The drinking fountains for our parks?
Yeah. Yeah, we can um talk with our new parks guy and try to get some of those things going. If you have specific locations that you would want those, um, get those to me and they're not like a huge expensive item.
I was gonna say, you know, I do have somebody that I spoke to a while ago that would donate um water access up at Lambert.
The South Lambert parking lot, right? Yeah. Yeah.
They like to see a dog do, you know, they have drinking fountains now that have pet.
I think that's what was discussed for that one.
Okay.
So. So yeah, there's money in that budget now for those. I think there was like, if I remember right, thirty five thousand for just kind of miscellaneous park improvements. If you want some benches somewhere or something like that, that could be part of, of that as well, so.
In looking at our old master plan for the parks, there's like you count up the benches, you count up all the fields. So I would love to have those numbers and then start working through it.
And and they may have a different approach.
That's true.
That was done in, in-house. Um, I'm sure whoever, which the planner and probably city administrator at the time that did that probably looked at some other plan and kind of mirrored it.
I thought they had national standards, if I remember.
But they, you know, that plant's fairly old and, and they might have a different approach today, so.
And then my other two items fall under street projects, I think. Um, allocating a portion of the budget towards our main street traffic.
Yeah.
I don't know how much that would be, but we need to, I think that's like the top ask.
Yeah, so we probably, we probably need more detailed discussion on what that would be
Okay.
to, you know, be able to put a number to it, so.
It's something that Ryan, um, we've worked with our consultant on. Are we to the point they have a, a suggestion for us or?
I don't, as far as the master, the.
No, main street with, with uh, that we've talked about dealing with the school traffic.
Yeah, he gave us a kind of rough um preliminary.
Right.
Saw that, but we haven't seen anything um additional.
Okay.
Yeah, not yet, so.
I would support Jessica on that. I feel like main street is a hot topic and
Yeah.
I just don't wanna get through this year and say, well, we didn't budget for it, so we can't address it when I would prioritize it.
I think you're right. From all our community, open houses, main street is a big item.
And then the other item, which we've had now two separate studies on, is addressing the speed and safety at Canyon and Ridge. Just making sure we have a plan and money in the budget to follow through with those studies and what the recommendations have been.
Well, we had anticipate that, albeit being part of the Canyon Crest project. So, I don't, I don't think that needs to be considered now separately because that project is coming in this budget, this coming budget year, so. Those are things that we'll bring up with whoever gets the design contract and just have those incorporated in.
And then I have a question about the bond. You said we typically go with Zions Bank, but do we put that out? Like, should that be competitive?
It, it is. They, they um put it out there for, it's a small one in their world. And so it's usually privately funded for that level of uh money, so. But they do, they do take proposals for it.
Is there a threshold? Would it be with our revenue, our tax, sales tax revenue flat? Would there be an advantage to looking at maybe less cash upfront and a larger bond, especially if the bond's considered small?
We can ask and see what.
I mean, I don't know the way that council would view that, but.
Yeah. I mean, we're talking there, you know, a lot of times they're doing ten, twenty, thirty million dollar bonds and.
No, hundred million, three hundred million dollar bonds.
Ours are very small.
Five hundred million dollar bonds.
That we're lucky at.
Yeah.
So.
The most important, I learned from bonding with the school district and if you bonded through this, that um the most important thing um when we bond is that we get lots of bids, cause it brings down our interest rate. They're, they're bidding on that, cause that's the biggest cost, right, is um what we're paying in interest. That's the variable cost, so. Uh, anyways, that took me a couple rounds to figure out what's the most important thing about bonding and getting lots of bidders. Cause they'll, they'll bid down, like, just like you're trying to sell your house, right? The more people are kind of clamoring for it, you can negotiate better. So, I think um, I don't know others, but Zions is a huge player in the market and they get lots of bids, which is the most important thing. Not who presents the bond, but how many people are bidding on.
If there's any detailed questions on that, we could arrange for Mark Anderson from uh Zions Public Finance to come to a meeting or be on Zoom and you could ask him questions if you want. Um, he's a former city manager for Eber City, so he understands both sides of things and he's been great to work with.
And then just one more clarifying question on the park tax funds. Is that something that's gonna come back to council and we're going to come up with a plan? Cause now it's, it's two, it's almost quarter of a million now, cause we didn't spend last year. So we'll get for this year, so it starts to actually build to a substantial amount.
Yeah, and if we go with, I mean, if we can get a master plan for the parks, I mean, two, a quarter, quarter of a million dollars could do a lot of good.
Yeah, so the, the current balance is just over a hundred and, it's almost a hundred and four thousand. So I think we maybe had a couple of months in the previous budget year and then we'll have this full, this will be the first full budget year of collecting that, so.
But if it rolled out from, from twenty twenty four into the capital improvement plan, I mean, do we still earmark it or it's just?
It's, it's in its own fund.
Oh, it has its own fund, okay.
Yep, so it's easy to keep track of it. It's the only, only revenue source in that fund, so. Um, but yeah, the council has to approve how those funds are spent. And we have to stay within the parameters that we advertise that we would to the citizens. But it was, for ours, it was pretty broad.
So, a- again, if it's baked into the budget or it requires a whole separate motion for a part?
Any, any expanse of um park tax funds will, will bring it to the council
Okay.
for a vote.
So it's a whole separate.
But what was put in the budget for this current year uh was that pavilion, so.
So my turn?
Yes, go ahead, Brett.
Hey, thanks, thanks mayor. Yeah, so, one thing is, I think we discussed during our retreat that we had some priorities for park improvements and then we're gonna hold off on some others based on the master plan update. And one of those was um working on the playground equipment at Creekside Park. And then Jessica brought up two of the things I wanted to bring up. One was the drinking fountains and the water, pet watering stations. We discussed last year putting one at that south parking lot at Lambert Park. And the other one that I suggested was at the Three Falls Trailhead. So that's one that I would suggest doing and I'm not sure if that was just postponed because of the staffing challenges.
Well, we're still in that same budget year, so we have almost three more months, so.
Okay, and then the last thing, um, as we discussed last summer, when talking about safety improvements for Canyon Crest, eastbound and southbound Canyon Crest, um, we talked about waiting to do any more significant improvements until we had this project upcoming to improve the entire thing and add the pedestrian path. So Shane, is, is a process to look at what the engineers have already recommended, looking at price, pricing on those and then bringing those to the city council to decide what we would like to see done.
I think when we get a consultant on board to design that project, um, we have a discussion about elements the council wants included as part of that um project. Some of them may fall outside the, the grant that we apply for with MAG. It was mostly, mostly related, as I recall, to um the paved trail. Uh, cleared ours from the roundabout to the city limits. Um, but some things, if it's like a simple island, you know, refuge island or something like that, I don't see that being too far outside the grant. Um, it could be included. If it, if it was a roundabout, I think that would be quite a ways outside of the grant.
Well, and the roundabout would defeat the purpose of pedestrian safety, as the consultant was talking about, that that's the worst scenario or the least safe for pedestrian, but he said it was the worst choice for pedestrian safety was a roundabout. Um, but I mean, you know, depending on what else have. Sorry?
Michael did, the, the small area plan consultant?
No, it was um Chris who said that. Michael was not, um, Michael was not present, but um it was brought up.
Who was Chris?
Excuse me?
Who is Chris?
He's the guy who's with Design Studios.
Chris Geddes, yeah.
Yes, so he's a traffic engineer?
No, he um he is the project lead.
Why don't we just wait and see what the engineer suggested? Cause we already had one last summer make suggestions and then we're going to have another one here shortly. So rather than jump to conclusions, why don't we just wait and see what they, what the options are and then we can make an informed decision?
We can totally do that.
Great, thanks.
And I think that information can be presented to the consultants as we get somebody on board and then if the council says, hey, we'd like this, this and this to be considered in the design, um, we can put that in the RFP as well.
Are you saying we're gonna have a consultant working with us through the whole Canyon Crest project?
They'll, we'll have a consultant design the whole project.
The whole project and that's just an element of the project?
Yes.
Perfect, okay.
Carla, I would, I'd be interested to, to hear Chris's opinion because of all the crosswalks in Alpine that I cross and. of all the crosswalks in Alpine that I cross and I cross a lot of them, the roundabout at Main Street is by far the safest. That's where more, by far more people stop for me there than anywhere else.
Brent? Jessica was at that meeting and Chrissy was at that meeting. Did I misspeak?
Um, the the problem with our roundabout here is there's no visibility because we have beautiful trees and it's all landscaped. So the issue Chris brought up is the way it's, our 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 only roundabout in Alpine is designed is it's not pedestrian friendly. I don't think it was a blanket statement that roundabouts are not pedestrian friendly. It's just we didn't have, we don't have any visibility.
So I, that's what I remember is the sightlines on our our specific Main Street roundabout could be improved by creating better sightlines.
But we don't want, but we, yeah, we we like our vegetation, but you know, that there is like this give and take.
With feeding and whatnot, but no, I specifically remember him saying that a roundabout is not the best solution for pedestrian safety. He said, in fact, it would be one of my last. And so that's what I remember.
Let's ask him again. We will be meeting with him regularly.
And and it's.
Yeah, please, please ask him again and see, ask him to back that up with some kind of substantial evidence.
Okay.
Because I would agree with Brent. I mean, I stopped for more people at the roundabout by far just because.
They're going slower.
They're going slower and you expect them to cross and it's just been my, I I agree.
Do you not stop for people at other crosswalks?
Sometimes I do, sometimes you don't see them.
Chief, chief.
Okay.
Citation, thank you.
It was egregious, right here, like, where was it? Right here. In fact, we stopped going south on Main Street because there was a kid by the water drinking fountain that wanted to cross and cars were going and I just started honking and just like, stop. I was so mad because it was like a ten year old boy on a little push scooter.
And I've experienced that exact same thing, so I'll take that, but I do stop. But to the point, to the point, I've experienced the same thing where they just keep coming and I'm flashing lights at them and they just don't see it in the same way.
Ryan, would you mind just emailing him that specific question so he's prepared to answer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it could be some differences in design opinions on roundabouts because the whole reason the landscape plan that we have is there and was implemented because that's what was recommended as part of our design. Um, the thought was if you have something that they can't see through, a a driver in an audible bill, that they're going to be going slower as they come around the roundabout. And so it it was done with intent um back then and and maybe the design parameters or thoughts on that have changed over the last twenty years or so.
Wasn't about Christmas lights?
No.
It wasn't. But that's how it it kind of worked out, but no, it was uh and and we went around and looked at a lot of different roundabouts throughout the state. And uh Bill Baronowski, who's like the, you know, it's like Mr. Roundabouts, his nickname or something like that. Um, he was involved and so it it was done with intent, but they may have learned things and, you know, changed recommendations for designs since.
Or there's just trade offs. I mean, if we want to slow down traffic, it's a different objective than pedestrian, like, sometimes they're at odds with each other and you have to prioritize.
Well, it's just a personal opinion and two professionals will get to entirely separate things.
True.
Yeah, I remember one.
There are lots of, there are lots of different roundabout designs. They don't have to be as elaborate as as our Main Street roundabout.
Right.
I know one that we looked at was in Provo on uh Center Street and what is that, like Seventh East or somewhere around there? It's built up, you can't see through it. Um, that was one that was suggested we look at. Can't remember the others specifically, but.
Yeah, they just put one not long ago by the railroad tracks, just a little bit um east of the In-N-Out, a little southeast of the In-N-Out in American Fork, I believe is where it is. That's ve- fairly simple and it's very visible. Um, it shouldn't be nearly as expensive as the one proposed by the traffic expert. As part of the small area plan. So I just, I just request that we be given some options to look at and make a decision as as a council.
Anything else, Brent?
Uh, nope, thanks.
Let's, anything else?
No, unless, I'm not hearing any like major projects to be included here.
I I would be amiss if I didn't, if our, if our, uh, I'm thinking of the people who have been here last meeting that want a library, um Sculpture Garden, the Sculpture Garden has, you know, proposed that it's a hundred percent privately funded. Um, what, I don't think we're we're at a consensus or we're ready to decide anything, especially about a library. But um if it turns out, like, all their options have been to use the church parking lot. But turns out we need like to like, like, maybe private funding will build a building, put in sculptures, but we need to figure out parking on our side. Is that a big enough project? Like, it needs to go into the budget or if it's not in the budget, we delay? Or how would that work out? And and I'm not proposing that that that's what we're doing. I'm just thinking of all these people who want these projects right here in this town center. And we have a parking issue if we do all those projects.
I mean, I think anything with that, it would likely be big enough to be something in the budget. And again, it goes back to the cushion we have. And when that cushion runs out, what do we do? You know, a lot of cities like Highland, they have a specific part of their property tax that funds the library.
Right, I'm talking about if 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 their dreams come true and they get all the funding they need for a library and all, I guess it wouldn't even happen in this calendar year, but maybe. Yeah, I'm I'm thinking both of them said it'd be like longer than two years for funding, so this is not something we need to even address in this calendar year.
Yeah.
And then there's the budget amendment process that which we go through.
Yep.
Okay.
And we're not limited to how many times a year, we could do one every month if we wanted to. We probably don't want to, it's a fellow caring and everything, but there's no limit on that. We typically do two a year, kind of mid-year and end of year.
And is the five million on the, going back to this town center, is the five million for the um fire station include like and, you know, if we need parking or redoing like that driveway, it would include the entire project, right?
That's based on an estimate, but yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, then I I think I'm good.
Any other questions? Shane, I think that's wrapped up. I think, you know, we've gone through something similar to this every year where um staff will ask what other projects other than what's being um offered. But we'll move on to our consent calendar. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments on the four items on the consent calendar? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I actually do have a comment. Um, I'm going to pull up a certain page here. That I was looking at the, I do have my financial committee and um we're looking at things like this and I thought it would be good to talk about just for a few minutes as a council. Um, this question here on page forty five. Let's see, where is it? Um.
Is this in the financial report?
It's in the waste management.
Oh, in that, okay, got you.
Sorry, yes, I didn't specify, did I? Okay, so it's in the wastewater planning program and um it says the replace, so this is all about our sewer. And and we have a special fund just for sewer, so um it's very easy to relate, like, what are our costs and what are like sort, resources to spend on our sewer? And they asked um in this, one of the questions was what is the replacement cost for the system? And Shane filled this out and it's a hundred and sixty-three million dollars.
And I believe that came out of our, the estimate in our sewer capital facilities plan.
Okay.
If I remember right, so.
Okay, and then the next question in this um survey that we're giving to the state is do you fund sewer's system capital improvements annually with sewer revenues at two percent or more of the total replacement cost? So a little math would put that closer to like three million dollars that we're like funding um to replace the sewer. This, I don't think it's what they're re- recommending, but sort of helping us lay out if a sewer has fifty year life that it would need to be replaced and it's a huge chunk of money. A hundred and sixty-three million is a huge chunk of money. I think that that's the point of the question. And then the third question um on this page forty-five that you guys are looking at. Me too. What is the sewer treatment system annual asset renewal cost as a percentage of its total replacement cost? And then he goes on and um lists that we spend about a hundred thousand a year, a page, page right there going on and then you do some math and like we're spending about a half a million in a five year period. So I I believe that um this is part of, this is related more to my finance committee is we're trying to understand, like, what are the ongoing costs of the city? Um, what are our revenue projections looking like way farther out than just one year at a time, like, assuming maybe we just have flat years for the next ten years? Um, and stuff like that. And I think that this financial aspect of the, this waste management um planning program is uh trying to help us see things in a, in a longer horizon than just year to year. And so um we're, if you use their math and I I don't know who came up with that two percent other than I'm thinking it's because it's a fifty year plan. Uh, like, we're way under funding, like, the replacement of our sewer system. And and I wasn't sure, um, did we build the entire system in nineteen seventy-nine?
No, that's when kind of the, well, the system was built in seventy-nine, served the population that was here in seventy-nine for the most part.
Okay.
There's probably some outliers that weren't served.
Okay, so we're almost hitting our fifty year mark, that it's fifty years old in like the next ten years, so.
I I can tell you this, so our systems, you know, the oldest part of it's like forty-five years old. It's not going to fail in five years.
Right.
System's in excellent condition and that's why we're not spending a lot of money. Um, the projects we have done in the last, say, twenty years were really capacity related. Um, we had to upsize a few lines. Um, the lines were in great condition. But in sewer, if you're over half full, they they consider half, a half pipe full at capacity.
Right.
Because you have some ups and downs like during the Super Bowl or whatever. So they leave, they kind of use that as a guideline. So for example, we did a project over here on First West. Um, we pipe burst it where they just dig up at the manholes and then they send a uh, it's like a pneumatic head that bursts the pipe apart while the sewer's being pumped from manhole to manhole and it pulls a new pipe behind it. So we only tore up like one little area of the road and then the next area down to the next manhole and the rest was put in that way. We did a similar project down on eight hundred South. Um, but right now, um, we're fortunate that with the capacity we have in our system, we're we're right there. If we were to add, if we were to do a big annexation, say, out west or something like that, it could change the dynamics of our system's ability to handle the flows. But right now, we're, we're in great shape.
Right. It wasn't so much about the sewer system as I, the point I was trying to make is that the, there's a financial um, and that's the point of the finance committee, is to think about not just year to year, but just the whole long term, which whether or not these are the right math, you know, the way we calculate what, which we'd be replacing is just not, I mean, I I can't speak to that. They came up with their own survey. But anyways, I just wanted to point that out, that um that this, that some of the things we're going to be talking about, and I know it probably bores everyone else to death, but some people uh, just that very concept of what are, what are the long term um outlay and as things age, like he's explained? Like, we go and replace things, like we redo our streets, like every, every twenty years, you know, every street needs to be redone or whatever, like, what is the long term? And he has that all mapped out in a plan, but um that's part of the role of the finance committee. That's our next project. I just wanted to bring attention to that. That's it.
And we're fortunate also up here where we don't have to deal with infiltration. Like in American Fork City, most of their sewer projects are because they have so much groundwater coming into their old pipes. All that water flows the treatment plant and they have to pay for it. And it, and it takes up capacity in the treatment plant. And so they do projects every year to reduce infiltration. We, we have almost no infiltration in Alpine. We have a couple manholes that have just a little bit of weeping water in them, but very, very little, so we're really fortunate that way.
Right, so they like came up with some formula and that formula probably doesn't apply to our city.
Yeah, so like for us to go spend three million dollars a year just to say we did it would be.
Right, and I'm not proposing that.
And that's how I was tying costs to that comment, like, we're not in that situation.
Right, I was just saying, all I'm saying is like this is just an area that um is beyond the scope of this discussion because this is you know, we're not talking about the sewer system. I'm just bringing up principle that that's part of, uh, we're going to try and tackle as a finance committee.
Like, our biggest sewer projects right now are when we do an overlay. We take some money from the sewer fund to help with the cost, which is getting greater um of doing, lowering and raising uh manholes in the process of the overlay and then putting concrete rings around. So they get more and more expensive.
What is the life of our pipes? Do we know?
Well, from a depreciation standpoint, it's probably a fifty year life, but.
But not for, I mean, for, I'm just talking about, you know, their actual life, like, when do we have to start replacing? Because I would think that would be the kind of the scheduled maintenance that has to go on.
It's the same with water system, like, there's water systems that still have wood stave pipes in their systems.
Seriously?
You know, they're planned to have a fifty year life, but those would be a hundred years old. So.
And does the state set any guidelines up? Like, if you have an HOA, the HOA is like mandated to have a certain amount in reserves. Do we have those same criteria?
They have some general stuff that they kind of, they want to make sure that we have a fund where we're collecting, you know, money for future replacements and stuff like that, but if we had a major thing, we'd end up having a bond for it. I mean, we have three million dollars or so in the sewer fund, so you know, it's, it's not going to go replace a huge part of the system all at once. But the chances, chances of that happening here are very slim.
So we're like almost optimizing our system because we have these great, like, we don't, we, weepage, seepage, would you call it? Where water's seeping in?
Seepage or infiltration.
Seepage, we don't have seepage and our, um, we haven't outgrown the capacity already built into the system.
Right.
So our life, our useful life is going to be much longer than fifty years, is what you're telling me? Okay. Anyways, that was.
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
Even though I'm frustrated that our elections are going up by thirty, twenty-three percent, which I can't figure out why things aren't more efficient over time, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, so we move by Councilman Thielen, seconded by Councilman Law. Any discussion? Not, let's proceed with the roll call vote. Kelly, do you want to start for us?
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Jessica Smiwell, yes.
All right, Rummer, yes.
Okay, consent calendar passes. Um, let's move on to reports and presentations, financial report for Q three.
Ryan, can you pull that up? Okay, so we formatted this the same way uh that our previous uh end of quarter financial report was put together. Um, first page here is just our, our fund balances for each fund, yep, right there. Um, so that's good information. It makes more sense when you see it on the graph, so. Um, so first in in table format, uh, we have end of years from twenty eighteen uh through twenty-three and then we have the first three quarter end of quarter balances here on the fir, on the right three columns. Um, next slide. So in the general fund, um, so the top line there is capital improvements. We would have had some projects uh probably street improvement projects that would have knocked that balance down some. And then also uh when we have a developer that posts cash with the city and we release those funds, that's currently in this capital improvement fund, so that would be part of this as well. Um, you can see the kind of dark blue line, um, where we got our property tax, our, our big, you know, chunk of the revenue there. Um, and then the cemetery perpetual care fund increased because of the sale of of plots. And classy road funds would have went down because of a project and then kind of coming back up with new revenue coming in. Uh, next slide. Um, on our utility funds, uh, the the standout here is the PI fund. Um, we've received that grant revenue kind of upfront, so that gave us a big jump in funds there. Um, everything else right now is just kind of increasing. Uh, next slide, Ryan. Uh, this graph is all impact fees. Um, we made a property purchase uh with funds from two different. Um, we made a property purchase, uh, with funds from two different impact fees. Uh, the recreation impact fees and the pressure. Uh, let's see, that's the wrong, oh yeah, that's the right color. The street impact fees, uh, that would be the purchase of the property on Canyon Crest and Ridge Drive. Uh, next slide. So this is our sales tax. Uh, cur- for this last, uh, distribution that we received, it put us, uh, just a little bit negative year over year. Um, but it's still trending kind of the way it has. And the next slide is just kind of the same information in a monthly bar graph format. Um, and I'm not su- oh, and then it just goes into, uh, we have our, our full financial report and the red green report. Um, there's a few little adjustments that need to be made in there or something probably got coded wrong. Um, there's a few things like on expenses that are, are looked low for where we're at in the budget year, but it's because of staff not being on board. Or something like that, um, for the most part, so. Uh, I think we're in good financial condition, um, for where we're at. Some of these things will be reduced as we have, um, projects that are finished up this budget year. Um, but I don't see any issues that I'd be worried about. Uh, one thing I did want to mention, the billing department with a low number of new homes. Um, those funds, if, if you look, they're lower than where they should be for this time of year, so we'll probably reduce. Um, that revenue in this upcoming budget to more reflect kind of the twenty, twenty-five new homes.
So I do have a question though, um, on the, one of the first graphs that you showed, it showed, um, property tax going up, um, last year. That's not just from the twenty-two homes, wh- I'm sorry, the second graph.
No, so that's.
Yeah.
Our property tax distribution for that year came in at the biggest, the majority of it comes in all at once.
Uh-huh.
And then just a little bit trickles in over time, so that vertical reflects.
Oh, that's the delta, okay.
For the year.
But Hackman doesn't do that on the other, is, um, look, maybe Hackman doesn't do that on the other years? How come it's not like jumping up?
Um, you're seeing, so that's where it's year end, from twenty eighteen to twenty-three. And so it's smoothed out, but I put quarterly.
Oh, I see, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is, uh, something that a, a resident brought up to me that, um, if our fund balances like are climbing, like this one is. Capital improvements, right? And then it's hard, it's hard to see that, um, we've earmarked that for the fire station or some portion of it. Um, so I was gonna, I said I would ask if of the seven, I was just looking at that other sheet, if we have seven million dollars, well, it's right here. We have seven million dollars in, um, capital improvements. Is any of that like internally restricted? Like for projects?
Yeah, if you look in the financial report, um, there is some of that that's really not even our money, like there's like a million dollars.
Like the bonds and stuff like that, right? Okay.
But it's outlined in here, I can tell you what page.
Do we have other earmarks and any other besides capital improvements? Not necessarily? Okay.
Other, other than impact fees, I mean, you could say that's earmarked because it's collected for a specific purpose. Yeah, yep, that would be too.
But that's its own fund, right?
I say not many, but yes, classy road funds, mass transit, fifth, fifth, those are all restricted for certain things.
Okay.
Like transportation, roads and sidewalks.
Since we were talking about su- sewer earlier, there's the general sewer fund balance of three point two, but then there's the impact fee sewer. So this, um, I think we have this discussion, we bought the property, that the impact fee, uh, has to be spent on new projects, not maintenance. And so these, these at the bottom, eighty-one, where are we? Impact fee, yeah, eighty-one, eh, fund eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three. I mean, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-five, eighty-six, that's all for new things. Is, can you explain that just one more time where we have the numbers in front of us?
Sewer's a little bit unique to the other ones because there's still a buy-in component, which is allowed with impact fees. From the capacity built into the original system, like the trunk line part of it. So at the end of each year, and, uh, honestly, we didn't get this done the last couple of years, so there will be a catch-up. We'll take. There's a calculation in the sewer study that says for each home, you can transfer X dollars from sewer impact fees. To the sewer general fund.
Oh.
As a buy-in component.
Okay.
And that is allowed within the law.
But the other ones, like we talked a lot about parks.
Mm-hmm.
But that's not, where's our parks?
It's fifteen, the third.
Oh, way up there.
Yep.
Impact fee, I see, okay. So the four forty-three is for new projects related to growth. And then the, um, do, any other, uh, projects that we're gonna do in the parks will come from the capital improvements fund? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it could be like the addition of pickleball courts at Creekside. We're not replacing something that was already there. It was new.
Right.
Yeah, so that, that could be, um, used there.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Shane, did you want to move on to fraud risk assessment or is that Ryan?
Uh, I'll, I'll do it. So we're just required to present this, um, to the council each year. Uh, it doesn't even require a motion. Um, it's really the same as it has been the last several years with the exception of, uh. We have, let's see, which item is it? Is it one of the twenty point ones?
Is it Megan?
Nine, the audit committee. We can check that box now. It's twenty, twenty points, so it pushes us up to the very low. I think we were in the, the next category down just barely.
I thought that, that was X from our responsibilities as a finance committee, the audit committee.
No, I thought that was.
We'll take it on. I just, I just need to be clear. We'll do it.
But.
Okay.
Anyway, I think it passes for what they're.
I see what you're saying. It fits the bill, yeah.
So. Um, anyway, we're in the very low category, which is great. Um, all we have to do is submit this to the state auditor's office that we did this self-assessment and I think Dave uploads this form. Yeah, once a year and that meets the requirement.
I had a question on four and five. Is that us? Like, do we have to sign something and do we have to take that training? I needed clarification about four and five, if that involves the city council.
Yeah, we had those, we had forms, um.
Oh, I thought it was the same thing. Is it a different one?
That's how I've understood it, to be the same thing.
The conflict of interest?
Yeah.
So we can look at that and clarify.
And then what about the online training? Because I was, I, I couldn't, the way it's worded, it wasn't a hundred percent clear whether, do each of us need to take that or is that?
Yeah, and I think that's once, yeah, within your four-year term. And I thought we had you do that when you got elected. Um, but we, I think we have a file, um, with kind of a certification that you've done that, something you print after you finish. It's just an online thing.
Okay.
You get on and do, but we'll, we can check our file. If not, we'll send you this link and you can jump on and take care of that.
Looks good.
Okay, let's move on to action items. Item A, Box Elder South annexation.
Do you want to do this approval of letter for Centracom first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, you did print it and I didn't, okay. Okay, item A, approval of letter for local government support for Centracom application to Utah's broadband infrastructure grant program. So, um, last time we met Comcast had come, um, and Centracom had kind of dropped off. But they have since re-engaged and we are working with them and they are also interested in going after the grant, which is great news for Alpine. That means that we will have another presence and there'll be a little bit of competition, um, which I think is healthy. Um, so they've approached us for a letter of support from them so that they can go after this grant. And, um, it's ba- it's basically the same things as what we did last time. Any questions? Um, there's no questions? Any discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve, this, thank you. I move that we approve the letter of local government support for Centracom's application to Utah's broadband infrastructure grant program.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Hanneman, seconded by Councilman Law. Any further discussion? If not, Kelly, will you start with the roll call vote?
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Jessica Smielen, yes.
Brett Rumler, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Let's move on to item two now, which is the Box Elder Annexation.
I'll do that one. Yeah, so this is the one that we've been, we've been talking about for a little while, fifty-nine lots, uh, up, up west end of town there. Um, this one's, well, this, this, this round started back in twenty-two. Um, we, we've had some different things go on, uh, that kind of delayed this. Uh, different projects in that area, the conservation easement up at Lambert Park, different things like that. We've recently been re-engaged with this one to see, uh, you know, what, what we can do here. Um, last October, we, we met the staff, was asked to provide information on the, on those topics, those bullet points, lot sizes and. Lot sizes improvements, general plan issues, non-conformance, future construction revenue and annexation fees. Um, we went over that. That memo is still attached in this, uh, in the staff report if you have, uh, questions or wanted to go over that. We looked at this again in Janu- end of January of, of this year. Um, it was, the, the idea was how does this impact, uh, any other future annexation or any other potential annexation out there? So we included this information, uh, this is in our annexation policy plan, um, that just kind of talks about this is what we're kind of anticipating with these, uh, upcoming. Potential annexations or areas left, uh, in the annexation policy plan that, uh, could potentially be, could be brought in. Um, so and, and with these, each, each annexation petition, if they were to come in, just like they were with, uh, with the subdivision, would be, uh, required to provide for. Uh, the infrastructure is identified, uh, as part of that development. This Box Elder South one's a little, a little unique because the city already provides, uh, water and sewer, uh, to tho- to, to this area. Where we don't, obviously with, with the other ones because they're, they're, uh, raw ground right now. Um, I, I don't know if I have a, a whole lot more to, to add on these. Um, the, just our, our recommendation on this or staff, we've already done a public hearing on this, all that, all the fun stuff's been taken care of with that. Our recommendation on this, this is a legislative decision, so it's, does it meet the, the general vision and, uh, standards outlined in the general plan and current city code? Um, that's, that's what's recommended for a, a decision to be made on that. Um, this is a little bit of a unique, uh, motion that we're, we're proposing here. Uh, if the council were in favor of, of annexing this, we would ask that you, uh, table this just because we need one more table on this annexation, but, um. For our annexation bingo card, but, um, if, if you were in, eh, inclined to, to motion to, or to, to approve this. We would ask that it would be, uh, tabled so that, uh, we could start working on an annexation agreement where we would, uh, identify some of these, some of these items that we've, we've. These are just ones that is we've talked about that would need to be included in that, but, um. So, eh, we're just asking those go at the same time, um, the annexation agreement and the, uh, approval would be voted on at the same time, if you're inclined to do that. If not, then there's just the motion to deny. Um, so that, that's kind of our recommendation. I, I probably skipped a bunch of stuff that if anyone has questions, but, uh, I'd be happy to go over any of those if there are any.
I have some thoughts if I could share them.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I, first of all, I want to, I really appreciate Ryan and, and other members of staff for addressing all the questions and concerns that the council members have had, at least since I've been. Serving on the city council. Um, they've done a great job and then I s- I sent some of my thoughts to Shane and Ryan today just to make sure I was factually accurate, so I appreciate them. Taking a look at that and giving me some guidance. So I think this analysis was provided to, to help the city council make a more informed and objective decision on this request. Um, one thing I would like to note is the clear intent of state law and Alpine's annexation policy plan, as well as the county's preference. Um, to avoid unincorporated islands or peninsulas. And, um, note that Box Elder South is included in Alpine's annexation policy plan and map as a potential site for annexation. And just looking at the map that's provided on exhibit A, it's clear that this is an island of county, county land that logically should be, um, annexed into the city. Based on those standards by the state, the county and the city. Um, it was also noted that the streets are already at Alpine standards, that the county required that in anticipation of future annexation. Um, Shane noted that the water and sewer have also been completed or connected to Alpine services as required by court settlement and order. Um, he did note, Shane did note that the storm drain sumps currently belong to Utah County. Um, one of the issues was, um, related to current infrastructure in the, in the neighborhood, roadside walks and storm drains. And it was noted that a- annexation feeds, fees could be included to address those deficiencies in infrastructure. Um, it's also noted that there's precedence for approving annexation when the lot sizes don't conform with Alpine's general plan, as noted by staff. The code did not meet those standards, um, and they were approved for annexation in the past. So I kind of go out, going through the prior meetings over the last year plus since I've been involved. I did a list of some pros and cons that I'll outline real quick. One is that, um, the staff, staff estimated the annual property and sales tax revenue increase would be, be around a hundred and twenty thi- twenty thousand dollars at final build-out. We talked today and we've talked several times in the past about necessary spending versus discretionary spending. Um, Chrissy talked about that quite a bit today. Um, we don't have a robust budget like some other cities. So any additional funding, I think, is very beneficial to the city to allow us to hopefully delay imposing. Transportation and utility fees or increasing, increasing property tax. And while a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year doesn't sound like much, anything will help. Uh, the other thing is the ability to collect impact fees and construction permit revenue for the twenty-two undeveloped lots at this point in time. And, um, Shane and Ryan mentioned the possibility to negotiate with the county to recover prior impact fees paid, um, to the county by the, by the landowners. Another is, um, compliance with Alpine's standards for new construction. Several, or it's been discussed before that, um, of the lots already built, they haven't had to build those, those homes to, to city standards, but if we. Annex this neighborhood now, we can ensure that those twenty-two lots, the new construction is, is to code for Alpine. And any future improvements to all fifty-nine lots would have to comply with, um, our code. Also is the ability to require the neighborhood to bring improvements to city standards before we assume and ma- maintenance responsibility. And then lastly, just looking at fairness for current Alpine residents, the Box Elder South residents are like Alpine residents in a lot of ways. They access their neighborhood through Alpine's roads, they use our parks, they come to Alpine days, et cetera. And I just think it's fair to the rest of Alpine that they, uh, their tax dollars come to Alpine and not, not go to the county. Some of the cons really quickly that have been expressed, um, in the past by the council. Is with giving residents in the subdivision voting rights in a possible effort to construct a permanent road through Lambert Park. In my opinion, the conserva- conservation easement makes the likelihood of that happening very remote. Another concern expressed has been lot sizes don't match the general plan. I already mentioned that, um. there is, there is precedence in, in annexing the Cove when their standards were not met in that instance. I also would like to note that there's nothing the city can do now about the issues and controversies from the past that pushed the developer to go to the county. And I don't think the lot owners, the current lot owners were parties to those disputes and decisions. And I don't think it's appropriate to penalize that, them for what happened in the past. Additionally, staff noted that the current lot sizes in Box Elder South are consistent with PRD provisions in the city, other than they have twenty percent open space instead of the twenty-five percent open space required with the PRD. Another concern was snow removal costs. Another was some lots don't meet frontage and slope standards. Those are definitely good considerations. I already mentioned that staff reported there may be some concerns with infrastructure problems, but that can be addressed with annexation fees. And another concern I reviewed was the idea of potential liability for the city. However, our city attorney noted that there's no difference between residents there and any other resident in the city. And the state provides immunity for the city. That would not make that an issue. Finally, I'm almost done. Councilman Thielen stated in January twenty-eighth, when this issue was last discussed, that he thinks that this property will eventually be annexed and I, I think it will be as well. He asked staff to address how annexation of Box Elder South might impact the remaining areas that are left to possibly be annexed. And in this agenda, the staff provided, first, that this, that they identified the remaining four areas and noted that each annexation is required to provide for infrastructure identified as needed as part of the development process. And second, staff did not identify any issues that would impact the other four areas if Box Elder South is annexed at this time. So, in conclusion, to me, the benefits of annexation at this time outweigh any possible drawbacks and I support annexing Box Elder. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I offer a clarifying piece of information? Can you go back to the Exhibit A? So, when I, I spoke with the ombudsman when he came, I think it was maybe a year ago, and did some training. So, it's actually, there is an island, but that's not because we annex. The way the state code reads is that you cannot annex something that creates an island. We already have one, so that state statute does not apply in this situation. And so, I just wanted to clarify that that's not a requirement because we have this situation.
Yeah.
And then one other piece. I do know that you mentioned that it's part of our policy that we could, but it also clearly says that just because we identify doesn't mean that we have to. And it is very clear in our policy statement that development in annexed areas is to conform to the master plan. And as you pointed out, council member, that there are multiple points where this doesn't conform to our, our Alpine City master plan.
Anything else? Anything else from anybody?
Yeah. Hey, just a couple of things. I'm looking for the exact planning commission notes, but here it is. Steve, the state code says the legislative, you can't annex anything unless the legislative body of the county in which the area proposed for annexation has previously adopted a resolution for approving the annexation. Do we know if the county has adopted a resolution approving the annexation?
Not that I'm aware of. That would probably be something that would, that would need to happen before it actually was, if it were to be annexed in.
Yeah, in fact, it says we cannot annex it until that happens, unless that has happened already.
I, I think the staff is saying like there's a, there's some loose ends that would need to be wrapped up and that we could add that to the list.
Well, we can't vote to annex because
They're not recommending we vote tonight. They're both, they're recommending we table it.
Yeah, if you, if you were, if you were to
There's loose ends to tie up.
Yeah, if you were to approve it, that's what we're saying. That's what we would ask.
To table it.
Just to kind of
But if you're gonna deny it, you can just deny it.
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha. Okay.
That's a good point, that we, the county has, there's another step in the process.
Lots of steps.
The last planning commission meeting, they voted to not recommend. Is that correct?
I'm gonna pull that up, but yes, I believe that's
That was a recommendation of planning commission.
Yep. Doesn't meet code and zoning requirements, sets a bad precedence, doesn't benefit the city potential liabilities. Okay. Right there, yep. I think that's all I had for now. And I, I think I'm kind of on the same page as Jason as far as what you quoted him as saying, Brent, but hopefully he did say that. But I, I stated all along, like, I want to understand annexation of, of everything because I, I don't want to set a precedent that you can do a development outside of the city and then just get annexed in. I want to have something in place where we, you know, where those other neighborhoods, those other islands or peninsulas or whatever they are. You know, we have some backup there or plan there. Okay, I'm done.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Chrissy?
I think I, it took some time to go up to speed and I found my own name in public comments opposing the annexation. But I think there's been a very thorough amount of immaterial pulled together to help me understand how we got here today, what were the issues in the past, and, but what are the issues before us going forward? And I, I appreciated Brent's detailed summary of the many, many, many pages that we've been reading about. And I do feel like that, that with some reservations, that those reservations have been overcome, that I would be, I think it would help unite our city. It would, it, it's not just a revenue standpoint. Although I'm an accountant, I know that money is not the most important factor. And I do think that having a peninsula like that or an island, I don't know if that's a peninsula or an island. Either way, is, is not, you know, we are one city and we have, we share the schools, we share many parts of our community, our parks, our streets, our, you know, our churches, and they're very much a part of our, our city. And it's hard, even though I'm an accountant, to like just lay out the money side of it because I feel like there's a lot more to being in a community than what tax dollars you're paying into it. And so, I, I feel like we've gone through a lot of hoops. And I understand why the, the planning commission voted against it and, but I do feel like when I think about the city to, the point that really is strongest to me is that we have other people here in Alpine who are, who are, how do I want to say this? What was your point? You, you worded it so well. Where was that point? It was that the other people in there are Alpine, something about, sorry, I should have marked it in, in your long summary. Yes, yes, sorry. It was, it was at the very end. Sorry. Not the cons, but okay. It was up here in the pros, I'm sorry. But this summarized what I was thinking. And it's not just a lot. I mean, I, I was hung up on the lot sizes, but certainly there's more to being in a city than how big is your lot? Where was it? Oh, I'm sorry.
Was it that the current owners were not parties to the disputes and the decisions in the past?
Thank you. Since you wrote your own document, I appreciate that. Yes. That, all of that history is somewhat water under the bridge and I don't feel like we're setting a precedent because we're talking with another, about another annexation right now and the land is undeveloped. And that's when we have our chance to have a voice in where the trails go, how, you know, what are the lot sizes? Is there going to be open space? And I feel like that's the ideal situation, is when we have, when the council is partnering with the landowner and we get what we want. But that door has shut and we can't do that because everything's built out. So, what is the best thing for, for the people that live there now and the people in our whole city is we are one city and, and to welcome them to our city. And it's more than just the money and the lot sizes, even though I'm an accountant.
Kelly, Kelly, I really appreciate your point about wanting to make sure this doesn't happen again. Maybe Ryan and Steve, if he's there, can discuss what the city can do to make sure these last remaining undeveloped areas that are part of our annex plan and map cannot do the same thing.
I'm guessing today's not the time to do that conversation.
Yeah, no. Jason, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I'll just put my two cents in. And like you said, when you were here, you saw yourself in the, in the notes. A lot of the, I mean, this isn't, we're not just saying an island here as a council too. I'm getting a lot of feedback from people in, in the neighborhood around me that they are opposed to this, in the same way you're opposed. It could be because they haven't researched it as much or there's a lot of different reasons why, but I'm hearing a lot of residents who are opposed to it too. So, if I go back to the very beginning, and, and again, I actually feel bad a little bit that we put this subdivision, we've taken so long to decide this in the subdivision, but when it first came to the subdivision, we had the discussion here, the conversation at that point stalled a little bit, or the question in my mind was what are the fees that they would pay to come into the city? And I believe it was two to two at that point with Lawn Lot. Jessica and Kelly were opposed to it at that time and, and I was on the fence. And I feel bad. I voted to bring it in and to analyze it, but a lot of the analyzation for me was, okay, what are the fees that, that, how can the city benefit from this? For example, you know, I, I got Doug Barton's email, so thank you for sending that out a couple hours before and, and read that thoroughly, but the residents there do not want to pay any fees, you know, outside of, outside of maybe fixing the roads that don't need to be fixed or the sidewalks that don't need to be fixed. We talked back then, what fees can we attach? And our city attorney mentioned we can do a lot of different things. You know, if we're doing a box culvert, for example, down there, which we spent millions of dollars, maybe there's a way we can attach some of that. If we have to do a roundabout at the top of the road there below Lambert, maybe they can help pay for that, but there's some things that the city can benefit from. If, if the subdivision isn't willing to do any of those fees and they're coming out that way, to some degree, that answers my question for me way back when, because when we first had the conversation in July of twenty twenty-two, there wasn't that added. Matter of fact, they were, they were, they were saying things like they'd be open to some of those things. Had I known that they were completely closed, I probably would have just, at that point, denied it based on it not following the general plan and the current city code. So, that's my thing. And, and, and listening to Brent, Brent, you know, put a lot of pros there. Not really many cons because he had an answer for every con. But on, on the January twenty-eighth issue, I do think eventually, based on the city councils that will come in the future, things change as city council members come in. If people run on wanting to annex things, they should. And if people vote for them, it should be annexed. But I ran on, you know, holding these annexations and trying to get as much out of it for the city. And to me, there's nothing really beneficial to the city here, other than being like, you said, a good neighbor. But if I just go back, does it meet our general plan and city code? I'd say no. So, that's how I would take that.
And Chrissy, I don't think of them as second-class citizens. I already think of them as part of our community and, and part of everything that we do. So, I don't really look at it that way. And I, that's the thing. I did read that email today and I had run some numbers on what I thought would be a fair number, which I think I told all you guys at one point. But like if that, if that's the case, I'm probably, yeah, and the feedback from the community too, like, you know, back when I was running for election, this was a hot topic and, you know, there were a few things that were a hot topic that I feel like I need to represent the community on as well.
What was the feedback of those who oppose it, of your neighbors? Was it because of the plan and the, and the lot sizes or what was it?
I'm not, I'm not sure it really matters. They're, they're against it.
Okay, anybody else?
Mayor, could I just, could I just clarify a couple of things, Mayor?
Yes.
So, there was a statement made about the county having to pass a resolution to approve this.
Yeah, I was asking if that's a real code.
It's not in the annexation code I'm aware of. What we do have to do, what we've done, what we've done in the past, and this has already been done, is we certify the annexation petition if it's been accepted. That goes to the county. The county responds to that if they want to. Maybe you're thinking about the boundary commission. If there is a protest filed, which I don't believe there was ever a protest filed, filed, then it goes through a process where the boundary commission makes a determination about
Yeah, I may have that
You might be thinking, you might be thinking about the boundary commission.
Yeah, so you're talking about a situation where Alpine City would want to annex them and they don't want to be annexed. So, there's pockets in Highland.
That's four eighteen and that's not applicable here.
Is that what it is? Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't apply here.
There's pockets all over Highland that are part of Utah County.
Yeah, that was my question.
So, that, that's if the city wants to annex and the county or, or the petitioners, the property owners don't.
Don't, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, we could do that maybe?
Yeah. The other thing, just to clarify, we do have in our development code that, that the annexation fee would be tied to costs created by the annexation. So, it's not, you know, there was a time when the box culvert and all of those improvements could have been tied to this annexation, but that ship has sailed, so.
Wait, Steve, so you're saying, that's not how I read that at all. I read that, that we can, we can negotiate a fee. That's what that sentence says. It doesn't say there's no time limit on anything.
It has
That's the first I've heard that too.
Yeah. And, and it's in our development code.
Go read it. Go read it.
It says, this fee may be separate, okay.
Fee may be separate, go on.
And then the purpose of these fees shall be to reimburse the city for any extraordinary impacts on the city.
Read the, read the, read the sentence before that.
It says, yeah, it's separate from impact.
Just read it. I didn't hear, will you read it so I can
Yeah, you just read it and just begin to end without interruption, please.
He's the one cutting it off.
Well, he was, I know, don't play us for him.
He was taking bits and pieces of it.
Okay, I'll read the whole thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, whether as a condition and requirement of annexation, an annexation fee will be negotiated between the city and the petitioners.
Perfect. End of sentence?
This fee may be separate and distinct from, and in addition to, any development impact fee assessed pursuant to the terms of the city's impact fee ordinance. The purpose of these fees shall be to reimburse the city for any extraordinary impacts on the city and infrastructure which may be created by the annexation.
I get something different than what you were saying initially. Yeah. Help me understand what you mean.
Well, if the box culvert and all of that was developed and done, all of those improvements were done for any extraordinary impacts on the city and infrastructure created by this annexation, then I see where you're coming from.
Well, hold on. The second sentence says this fee may be distinct from, and in addition to, any development impact fee assessed pursuant to the city's blah, blah, blah.
Impact fee ordinance.
Yeah.
That's a separate thing.
So, when it says the purpose of these fees shall be to reimburse the city for any extraordinary impacts on the city and infrastructure, it's talking about, when it says these fees, it's talking about the impact fees in the previous sentence, not the two sentences ago, the fee that may be negotiated, correct?
I, I disagree with that interpretation.
Okay.
I can see how you could argue that.
You can disagree with that.
Yeah.
So, so there were impact fees paid, somebody mentioned, was it you, Brent? There were impact fees paid to the county rather than to us because it was developed under the county. And somebody said we could negotiate maybe to get some of them back because we've absorbed all of
No, no.
We've added We've added streets, water, sewer.
So, um.
No.
County collects very limited impact fees, if anything. The impact fees go, have gone to Patterson Construction. Because they developed the water system and the roads, even if we annex them, we wouldn't be able to collect road impact fees, water impact fees, any of the normal impact fees that we have under our restricted accounts that we would get in a normal development, we wouldn't be able to collect any of that. And that's all outlined in the settlement. So, no.
Okay.
And then, um, far as working with the county, I, I don't remember what, I don't think they really have impact fees. I think they have, they have a fee, but it's not like a real, it's not like an impact fee. The county works differently. Um, but no, that's not something that we would be reimbursed with anything with that.
So, um, it's good to address the fees.
Clarification from Shane on that, because he, I think he's the one that brought that up.
So, the, from my mic off, the settlement agreement specifically mentions sewer and water impact fees. I don't think it talks about the others.
I thought it was road also.
I don't believe so.
So we can still collect road?
Whether we could collect those or not, I'm, I'm not, I don't know. Typically, typically the street impact fee, we collect some at time of billing permit and some at time of subdivision. I'm trying to think on streets. I think it's at time of subdivision.
So we wouldn't be able to collect that at all?
Yeah, so.
I only bring that up because I know a lot of the arguments at the time were, hey, we're missing out on, you know, quarter million dollars or half a million dollars on impact fees. But then when I looked into it, it's like, no, not really, because with those fees, because they were already collected, we couldn't collect it again. So that's, you know, that's gone.
So the only thing on the table for impact fees, um.
The road?
Is new homes built. If if we annex, annexed this, we we still have twenty-some-odd lots left?
So you'd be able to collect road impact fee and what else? Parks, I guess?
Parks, um.
But not water or sewer?
Storm drain, I believe.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, reduced impact fee from any other home. So there's, so that's the only thing um, under our, under our current, I mean, if we move forward. And then there was, um, oh gosh, I lost my train of thought again, impact fees and then. Oh, so one of the, there is a graph in here. Sorry, Ryan, can you find it where it says, like, where it shows if we're annexing, annexing land, like, all, it goes waters and it says, but it's already up to code, like, right there. There you go. So in this particular annexation, this is the thing I feel like is a, what sort of tipped me the other way is, like, we can't change the outcome of, like, if you look at this diagram of, of streets, we, like, the streets are built, they're to our Alpine standard. Water, the water's done, it's already completed, like, there's no, uh, there's no debate about, they have wa, they have both capacity for water and and the infrastructure for the water, like, we have the water shares or whatever. Um, the sewer is, that's already done, and I'm assuming it's up to standard. I feel like we talked about that at one point. And then the storm drainage may not be up to standard, but it is complete. So that was sort of a question mark. The trails, um, I think we've addressed that. Is that right? That we understand where the trails are and where they connect. And then pressurized irrigation is not an issue because of the elevation. So the only mitigating fees that we could, if we, if we went forward, that are any question mark on would be on storm drain. Am I remembering right, Shane? We've talked about this so many times. Okay. So, like, I don't see the advantage of waiting because we'd lose out on those impact fees for the the lots that are left, would have years of missed property taxes. And yet we still have water, streets, every parks, everything that that, like you said, they're part of our community. So I don't, I can't see the trade-off in waiting. Like, what's the, how's that an advantage to wait? Some of you are no and never. Is that what I'm hearing? Is there any advantage to waiting, I guess? I guess that's what I'd like to ask.
Well, I'll be honest with you, some of this is brand new for me today, based on our last conversation, which I feel like happened, happened in July of 2022. I read the doc, the ordinance very different than Steve Doxy explained it to me just now. And I, I think I was told differently eighteen months ago. So I'm going to go back and review the, the, um, the video on that and hear what it is. But I, I heard something very differently on that.
Yeah.
So it bothers me some too, to be honest with you. We're trying to make decisions. And we've all had this conversation about adding those costs. And now I hear, for the first time here, well, the only thing you can add is a fee for some streets that don't need to be repaired or some of these tiny little things.
But I thought Shane actually said that those street fees were collected at time of development. So I'm not even sure we're missing, we're able to capture that.
Yeah. I'll be honest with you, I'm just frustrated with it.
Well, and then I would just answer Chrissy's, like, why now? Why not now? It just, because again, as elected officials and running to represent our community and, you know, not Highland, not the county, but Alpine residents.
So, um, so it's not a matter of when, it's a matter of never. Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
I mean, I think it's what Councilmember Thielen said, if we have another election cycle coming up, if someone wants to run.
No, no, I meant for you personally, since we're, we're trying to make a decision tonight, not projecting the future.
Oh, yes. There's nothing, it doesn't, all of a sudden meet our policy. That's clearly spelled out. There isn't, oh, a certain amount of money we can collect. There's nothing we can do that's going to magically align it with our annexation policy.
Okay. And you're the same way, right? It's not a matter of, because to me, I just don't see any benefit of never doing it or even waiting. That, that's sort of where I'm, that is where I'm at. I, I just can't see a benefit to waiting or 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 never. But I didn't run when you did. This absolutely never came up when I ran for office. It was not a question.
What changes in the services they are provided right now if they get annexed? What changes?
There's a couple of things.
With what?
So police is serviced by the Sheriff's Department. And then snowplowing is provided by the county instead of the city. We don't snowplow up there.
Okay, two things.
But other than that.
Well, also, we don't, this may be a small, a small thing, but we don't allow non, non, people not in the city to buy a cemetery plot.
That's a good point.
I, we're not, I'm sorry. We had a public meeting already.
My, my email was mentioned.
I'm sorry, sir. I would like to just be able to speak, you know, I, I feel like, I'd like to hear what council has to say and see where we're at. And I would really like to put it to a vote, one way or another. I feel like we've taken enough time on this. It's been, what, three years? Um, I think we're ready to move forward. If, you know, I feel like we've heard from everybody else from city council. Um, does anybody else have one, anything that they want to say before we put a motion forward?
I would like to just ask, both Kelly and Jason suggested that they spoke to neighbors, and they gave their opinion that they don't favor annexation. Can you just let me know how many people you talked to and what their cons were, what their opposition was?
I'd say.
In general?
I'd say many, and it was at cottage meetings during the election, last election cycle. I mean, many meaning more than twenty.
So during, during the elections a year and a half ago? Okay.
No, when I was elected. It was almost four years ago.
Oh, so four years ago?
Yeah.
All right.
Was the conservation easement, does that, was that a factor in your, when you talked to your public? Because I've heard that brought up, and it's sort of a dead issue now.
They also wanted conservation easement as well.
Okay, so they were pro conservation easement. Okay, thank you.
What was, what was the opposition to annexation?
Hey, Brent, let's have Jason answer that and see what.
Well, my goal is not to get in a back and forth with Brent on Zoom outside of there trying to argue his point. I, I would agree with, with Kelly in that, that was the feedback I got from my cottage appointments. I mean, even recently, people are coming up that don't want the Fitzgerald property annexed. And they're letting me know that. And I think it's very healthy for me to listen to them as opposed to you. I mean, that's my thing.
No, ab, no, absolutely. I think that's vital for us to listen to them. Absolutely.
To Jason's point, um, you know, even from the open houses that we've had, I think the general consensus is, for better or for worse, Alpine does not want to expand. That's the message I'm getting on so many different levels.
Let me ask you the question, because I, because my answer is zero. How many people that live in Alpine have come up to you and said, I want to annex this property?
Zero, zero have come up to me independently. Yep.
I do think I, I, I give you guys, well, especially you two that live up near the property, it feels like everybody is more sensitive to things that are close to their homes. And that's not the area I live. And so I'm sort of removed from the angst that your neighbors are feeling, or your neighbors are feeling and Jessica's neighbors are feeling. And so I do weigh that in because we're spread out throughout the city and my neighbors have different issues because we live in, we have different geographical.
And I've said before, and it sounds like now it's possible, maybe, that I want to annex it all at once. That's what I want.
Annex, could you clarify?
Annex it all at one time.
Oh, the whole, everybody on the list?
So everyone comes in on even.
Plainfield.
Yep.
The only problem with this one is, is part of that are some fees attached with annexation and.
It's true.
And if if we have an issue with this particular property not wanting to be a part, then they won't be able to be annexed in.
Yeah.
Unless the council runs on it and says that they're open for that and they get, and the council changes, then, like I said before, it could happen. But I, I agree with what Kelly said. I don't agree with, um.
This is kind of a different beast, though, from the other annexations, as far as, this is, you know, and kind of the Cove, but, you know, this is a little bit better in that, you know, if you look at our other annexation areas, you know, they don't have the city infrastructure for water and sewer and, you know, things like that, where this one already has it. It's just kind of a unique beast. And I think that's why I feel like, I get your wanting to annex it all together.
Yeah.
Um, and I do feel like if they are to get annexed, because they are a different beast, that it would be harder if we bring them in with the rest, just because, at least from Steve's explanation of annexation fees, it would put them at a great disadvantage if we lump them all together. But really, it's up to you guys, what you want to do. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to deny the petition to annex Box Elder South subdivision based on it not being compatible with the standards found in the general plan as well as this current city code.
Is there a second?
All second.
To move by Councilman Thielen, seconded by Councilwoman Smuan. Any further discussion? Okay, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
Kelly Law, voting yes on his motion, right? Kelly Law, yes. That's, okay, yeah, got it.
Chrissy Hammond, no.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Jessica Smuan, yes.
Brent?
Brent Runler, no. Brent Runler, no.
Okay, um, the petition is denied. Let's move on to item three, consideration for fast cast voting for 2025 municipal elections.
Okay, this is an item that came from Utah County to Deanne, who takes care of our election-related issues. They have an option that each city in the county can incorporate fast cast bony for the municipal election this fall. This option is, is not required, but can be used if the city desires. With this option, the city would have the option of accepting fast cast votes Monday through Thursday of the week before the election during our, our city business hours here at City Hall. The county clerk's office supports this and feels that implementing this option would increase voter participation and improve the percent of ballots that are accepted because those ballots wouldn't be put through the signature verification process. We included the email from the county on kind of the details of how this would work. We did have some concerns with this. And I've heard the same concerns from several of the other cities in the county. Our city staff would have the responsibility of handling the ballots and storing them until the county picks them up. So if there's any question in mind, I feel like that could roll us into, to potential issues there.
Does our city employee also stamp the ballots and look at the ID?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the process.
So they're raising our rates twenty-three percent, and that they want us to.
And they want us to do all the work, yes.
Yeah.
Was this related to what we just approved?
Right.
It's frustrating, right? This is part of the whole, what we discussed earlier.
I think it's an oxymoron that it's fast cast. Sorry.
I will just say, I will just say right now that I, I am in favor of eliminating all mail-in ballots. And you vote on one day on paper with your ID, period. So I'm going to be no on anything else.
Okay.
So you guys can debate it all you want, but there you go.
Just, I'm almost finished. This could.
Oh, we've already learned that the more you encourage these remote ballots or mail-in ballots or whatever ballots that aren't in person, live, on a piece of paper, there is rampant fraud. So no on everything. I don't even want electronic machines anymore.
Oh, my God.
Those are absolutely.
Thank, thank you for bringing us back to the dark ages. But can we hear from Shane?
Really, Chrissy? Because I'm pretty sure every other country that you guys always point to that say.
You'll have your turn. You'll have your turn.
This country is so forward-thinking, we should be more like them. They've all eliminated electronic ballots.
Hey, Kelly, let's let Shane finish his presentation. And then I will let you talk, okay? Let's, point of order. But thank you, Shane.
And I'll just interject what I hear. We're not in favor of this. I.
I'm not excited.
Yeah. So, but the last bullet point was, it could put a strain on our staff time, staff time for those days preceding the election. The county did say they could hire our staff as poll workers, which just seems like kind of a big mess. And I, I hate the thought of, like, bouncing every year to some different program. It seems super confusing to me and for the voters. I think just something consistent would be great. So we didn't feel like we should make this decision as staff, so that's why we brought it to the council so that you could.
Well, and to Jason's point, I'm wondering, are they raising the rates because they're going to have to hire more poll workers? Or, or is this just no matter, oh, no, because they're saying we have to do this, but the cost would still be the same. Yeah, no, no, no. Okay.
I mean, if you look at the cost of postage, it has went up. So I would have expected their fee to go up. And, and if we don't have a primary, it cuts our costs in half.
Yeah.
But we budget on these election years for that primary and the regular election, so.
So we've heard from Kelly. If there's no other comment, I would love to take a motion. I will.
I just want to understand what's, what we're telling, what we're deciding for our residents. So there were some things, and we heard from our representatives, there were some laws passed. And I want to know, what are Alpine residents going to be asked to do to vote? And, and this is me not maybe understanding everything that happened in the legislature a few weeks ago. If we don't do it this way, then what is their option at that point?
It's just the mail-in. But in order to do the mail-in, you do have to register. You have to register every eight years online that, you know, to verify who you are. And then you can.
I thought it was five.
No, it's eight.
Eight. Oh, that's right. She corrected it.
And, um.
So starting in twenty, this fall, right? This fall? If I don't go on and tell them I want them to mail in my ballot, I get no ballot, right? And then what is my option at that point? Because I feel like that's going to be the default. No one's going to log in and, not, no, nobody thinks about doing it. They can barely remember to vote, let alone get in and register.
I check every year to make sure I'm registered, to make sure I get my ballot.
But I thought you were against mail-in.
I check every year to make sure I'm registered. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote the way they tell me to vote right now?
No, no, okay, so.
I want to eliminate it, yes.
Okay, so then, so if we get in and register, they get to vote, we get to vote by mail?
Yes, it's an opt, it's an opt-in. You're registered to vote already. You just have to opt in that you want a mail-in ballot. Yes.
If you don't go in and opt in.
Then you have to go to, there's a handful of polling places around the county. Then you have to go to, there's a handful of polling places around the county that you can.
That's what I understand.
And you can still do, and people that want to do that, they still do that. They go.
Right, that's already an option. Okay. All right, so by not having it here, they just need to travel farther?
Like, by not having it here, the way I see it, it's just like it's been in the past, for the past.
We haven't had it here in years.
No, no change. Other than the change in the laws, I understand that you have to get on and I'm assuming that's.
And say, I want it online.
Supposedly prevent some kind of voter fraud.
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to deny the implementation of fast cast voting for the 2025 municipal election.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Thielen, seconded by Councilman Law. Any discussion? If not, let's proceed with the roll call vote.
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Hammond, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Jessica Smuan, yes.
Brian Rumler, yes.
Okay. We are not going to have fast cast voting. And last item is the fire station.
Okay, so, I don't know, several months ago, we had, uh, kind of a RFP, um, for the CMGC. Construction Manager General Contractor Services, um, that was given to us as an example by our architect. Um, I know, I think, um, Chrissy had found one from American Fork City that they use, I believe, for their fire station. It was like really long and very detailed. I think probably the architect or someone wrote that. I'm thinking it wasn't any of their staff, but I could be wrong. Um, anyway, we worked, um, with some others on this to prepare something that was maybe a little bit in between. It's a few pages shorter than the American Fork one and ours is a little bit different situation. But, um, we wanted to bring this to the council, um, so that we'd make sure we have clear direction on moving forward. The one thing that we wrote into this, um, if you look on page two, pre-construction phase. This phase of work includes but is not limited to reviewing the complete design, which will be based on a plan approved by the city council. So we would have the kind of basic concept plan, uh, layout, um, decided on by the council before this really moves forward. So, um, you know, we've heard from the council that they definitely want input on this. Um, and so I think that provision will provide that. So, and this would get this process moving and get the addition and remodel done. So, is there any questions?
Carla's not here, but, um, does that name me the mayor pro tem?
Yes.
Let's do it. Any questions?
Uh, my question was, at what point do we, um, like collaborate on design? Is it after we hire the archi, the, we have, we've hired the architect, now we're going to hire the contractor? When does that process begin?
I think we would spend a little more time, um, right now with the architect, trying to work through and, and the fire chief and everyone involved, um, on that layout. Um, and then, once we kind of have that, then we can put this out and, and move forward with securing our general contractor.
So Shane, if I understand this correctly, you want, you want us to approve this and then you're going to provide a final version of the RFP that we then approve?
Well, we, we could issue the RFP, we could fill in the blanks. Once we have our concept nailed down. Um, and the council's on board with that concept plan and the footprint of the building, you know, how it affects the park property in this block. Um, once we have that, then we can push this out. Um, it might, there might come a time when some of the design, even at that level. Like involving the general contractor, um, helping with, you know, is this option going to cost less than? Is option A going to cost less than option B if we're looking at a couple of different layouts or something like that? But we could work something out with someone to help with that. We've already kind of done that in the past. Um, cert construction has kind of helped us with some things and kind of costing out based on the concept plan that we already have. So.
Explain this again to me. The phase of work includes, but is not limited to, reviewing the complete design, which will be based on a plan approved by the city council.
Yes.
So to date, you don't have a plan approved by the city council?
Right.
Is there a reason why we don't get the plan, um, the design beforehand before signing off on this RFP?
Well, we want to make sure we have this ready because that, really, this is, this is general. I don't really see it affecting the rest of this RFP. But if we, you know, if the council says, we don't like this, we need to start over, it's going to take time to do that.
If we don't like what? If we don't like what and we want to start?
The RFP.
This is the RFP for the general construction manager, general contractor. So then you get the general contractor, then they go do the RFP for the, with the design and everything to.
Okay, so this is RFP that we're not going to send anyone.
We're not going to send it out yet, but we want the council to say, because the one that we had before, the council then liked. And so we.
What, remind us why the council didn't like it before?
It was, it was very short, very, it was like two or three pages long. Um, this one's like 20 something pages long. Has a lot more detail, but I think it is much better.
I mean, this might be a simplified way of looking at it, but what we're trying to do is identify the ability to find a project manager, really. Because this kind of project, we can't just, you know, none of us are the experts. And so we need to give them the authority to identify that project manager so that we can then do all of these next steps. But none of those next steps are going to, um, move forward, the final plan without council engagement. But we've got to get a leader.
Yeah.
And I think too, um, when you are looking at design options, like cost is a big driving factor. If we, if we want to do something that's going to throw us way outside our budget, you, you know, the people sitting here and maybe even our architects don't know that that's going to be so expensive. So I think it's good to have input from somebody who understands building, like, and also the sequence of things. Like, I didn't understand until Carla explained to me, and it's clear in this RFP, which I appreciated, that the firefighters are going to remain where they currently live, where they do more. And then, so, uh, the civic area is like phase two of the building, because they're going to have to move into the new part. Anyways, those are the type of decisions, um, that having a contract with an understanding of, like, this, the sequence to do things in a cost-effective way. And also the materials and design affect cost, it's good to have them on board, like a team, a very valuable team, excuse me, a valuable team member.
So again, I'm just going to ask this because I'm, I'm probably the slowest one in the city council. The completed design, where are we in that process with the city council right now?
We're, we have a concept that was done as basically a, uh, it was, it basically is like a concept study. There, there was another word for it. I can't think of it right now. But we were just looking at, um, what we thought would work. But I, it's been presented to the council, but we, um, there hasn't been like a formal vote saying move ahead with this plan.
So we had that one that we brought, which obviously had this many bedrooms and a road going through here and, and, and that type of thing. But we've never approved that. What, what role does the city council make on determining yes or no on that moving forward? Or do we? I mean, just kind of.
Well, that's, that's what, that's where we feel like we've been bogged down, that we can't kind of get to the next step. Um, like, you know, if you're saying, we only want X number of bedrooms.
Perfect. Tell us what the solution is then, because I, I don't know what you're telling us we need to do.
So I feel like, I'm not a firefighter. I don't live their life. I don't know how everything works there. I feel like, and I've said this before, that we need to lean on our chief for what is functional and what is needed for them. I mean, he's told us, we're not looking for a Taj Mahal. We just need something that's functional and that can work for what we're doing.
So to hear what you're saying then, basically the chief and the architect are going to come up with what they think it should be. And you, and then we should probably approve that because we're also not the, the police chief. So whatever they present to us is what we should say yes to.
Not necessarily. That's where, if you have input.
There's process.
If you say, you know, there should be a training tower or there should be a basement or, you know, we don't want to do a basement because it'll cost too much with the elevator. We talked about these things before, um, when they came here. But, um, at some point, we've got to get a concept to be able to move it to the next step. Um, but, I mean, some of you have said, you know, we don't feel like we've had input, but we brought it back a few times to get input. But we just haven't, either we haven't understood or somewhere it's kind of broken down. But to move forward, we've got to get that concept.
And I think part of it is that moving forward, once we go out for this RFP and get and award it, then we can work and move forward.
That's not what this is though, right?
No, the RFP is a request for proposal. So we have a concept plan, we send it out. So there'll be engineering and development companies that will come and, you know, they'll put in their proposals, right? We'll select it or, you know, award that bid. And then from that point, we can work with them. Right now, nothing is really concrete.
So you were out when we asked this question, but the question is, um, is, this is just to say, this is an RFP that we will eventually send out. But this is not going out to anyone yet. Is that what you're understanding or is it going to go out?
No, my understanding is that this RFP will go out.
Okay, so, opposite of what we just heard.
So.
It's not going to go.
I think in most situations, and we haven't done a project like this, and I've said that before.
Brian, can you put it on the screen again?
But, but in most situations, um, the council says, take this project, here's the, the property, come back with the design. But the council wants to be more involved with this design. So my thought was have a concept approved before this goes out to satisfy that request from the council. The other thing that we could do is just say, here, this is our budget. Bring back something that works and fits within that budget.
Can I ask one clarifying question? So the construction manager slash general contracting services that this RFP is for is to hire that role that we talked about, that we've never really hired before.
Right.
Someone's going to manage all that stuff. That person is going to put together a plan.
Working with the architect.
Working with the architect, working with us, working with the fire chief. And then that person's going to build whatever plan that is and it's, and then we'll get, that's where we'll get the, the design. The engineer and archi, architect did stuff, the estimated cost for what it's going to cost to build. That's not necessarily what this RFP is. This RFP is for the construction manager to do all that stuff?
We're hiring a general contractor that works side by side with the architect through the design process. So they look at, you know, is steel construction or wood construction going to be cheaper in today's market and all these different things? And then that general contractor will also, they'll have an electrical package, a, a site work package, electrical plumbing, all the different things. They actually bid that out. So there is a competitive process. There might be some of the work that they do within their general contractor company. But generally, they are bidding out, just like we would bid out a water line project. But it's a full package deal. We have the design upfront, we have the specs. We say, this is the kind of pipe we want. We're bidding it out that way. This is different in that they're costing and doing value engineering kind of on the fly with the architect.
So I think, okay, I think I'm under, is Jason's concern is the concept plan that we have. What room is there for change once we go out for, once we put out the RFP? My understanding was that there's still room for change. This is just a concept plan.
What Shane said, it actually is not going to go out for RFP until we have agreed upon, um, what the approved plan is.
And, and I would like it, I added that part in. I would like it to go out. But in the end, the council has to approve everything. But I would like it to go out and just get moving forward. You know, with whatever parameters they're given, but based on the feedback we've received, um, I.
So Jason, what exactly, um, are there, what exactly do you want to see changed? Let's hammer this out and let's get it done so we can get this RFP out and move the process.
I guess I feel like, and this is just Jason, one of five, six, that, that we really haven't been asked our opinion on this at all. And to your point, we're not specialists in it, we, you know, but, but half of this building is, uh, you know, a city use building. You know, have they asked us what we think should be on that other side, you know? Have we asked if, if maybe there would be in addition to some of these other things? I mean, there hasn't been any discussion, I feel like, from anyone here to give any improvements on the, on the elder, you know, the retirement, whatever it's called. What's it called?
Senior Center.
Senior Center. Um, there's that. I've asked from the very beginning and I feel like it's, I'm banging my head against the wall. I just want to see what the, um, what the layout is for the, for the block. How it all fits into the block. I don't think that's too much to ask to say, we're not going to go out to RFP on this until we establish that piece of it. I actually don't, you know, I think it's great. This would be a great addition to our city. I don't think we're in such an urgency that we're going to have any decrease in our capabilities if, if we take some time to do that. And again, I don't, hopefully this doesn't come across like I'm bringing it up just right now. I've been asking this for months and months. But I don't feel like I've even got an inch on it. So.
So let me make sure I'm understanding. You're wanting an entire block plan before we move forward with the fire station? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's one of the things I've asked for the last couple of months.
So you're asking for an entire block plan?
Yep.
What else?
Well, I would ask this council, has anyone here added to or provided any positive or negative or improvements to the, um, the side of the building that the city would be using for its events? Has anyone?
I've, I've given feedback and I've also given feedback to Shane on some alternatives for the fire station. Because I understand with the current proposal, you're saying that impacts the entire block, the way it's shown to us now. I submitted an idea to Shane where it only impacts the northeast corner of our block. And so I look at it and say, if we can agree that this is the scope of, you know, the lot that we want to use for our fire station, that that's like a phased project. As far as the community center goes, um, it's going to be like this giant room. And so there's not a lot of feedback. The idea on that is it's as, um, flexible for a multipurpose room as possible. You know, there's a little bit of detailing around how a kitchen would be set up because there's certain basic features that have to be met for state code for the health department. That's completely out of our ability to even give input. Like, here's the requirement, this is what it has to look like. So that's what it's going to be. So I think as far as looking at an entire block, that really, to me, only relates to that drive aisle. I think it, to me, it's the drive aisle that we really need to dial in on. It's probably really expensive, too. I look at how much is concrete per foot right now. And, or however that would be. It needs to be engineered in a way that they don't have to tear it up in a few years. That's the biggest unknown.
And I, tell me if I understood this wrong, but when we discussed it in our retreat, I thought we came away with more of the thought that we get the fire station nailed down and then everything else builds around it.
Yeah, I think you left, Jason, and we were not in consensus by the, when you were leaving. And I don't know, I emailed everyone and said, what was our consensus on this block? Because I didn't, I, I hope Deanne wrote something down. Because I, I am just as fuzzy as Jason is, like, what are we doing with the city block? Is, is that going to be, um? But that was at the retreat. And then, a-again, then we, we, we decided with, with, um, when they presented, you missed that meeting, where the library people and the sculpture garden needed feedback from us. And we said, just don't touch this corner. This is for our fire station, but you guys can, you know, figure out what else you want to do. But that, that was last meeting.
Yeah, that was a crew.
You're sort of like bringing brought up, because when you left, it was not clear and we've sort of moved past that stage.
Was that our offsite meeting?
Yeah, when we were here at the retreat.
And then last council meeting, you should go back and watch because there was.
There was a lot of discussion about this topic.
Somewhat of an in-depth conversation about exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, we talked about it in this room with the library people and the sculpture garden people. And they kind of wanted to know, like, are we free to proceed? And we said, don't touch the fire station and leave that space alone.
Again, at the end of the day, we can move forward. I'm just not going to vote for it until, the one thing I've asked for last month is just to lay out on that block. And I agree with Jessica. I mean, there's other solutions there. I just haven't seen it. And it'd be nice for us to. So that we're not all having different ideas of what it's going to turn out, that we agree. so that we're not all having different ideas of what it's gonna turn out, that we agree on it, and then send it out to RFP. But the-
But what's going to RFP isn't the concept. What's going to RFP is identifying a project leader.
I want you to know, I was confused too when I saw this, because we built a lot of buildings, like, probably twenty or thirty when I was on the school board. But we have, like, the architect, we worked separately with the architect, and once all the specs were figured out, and like, and you know, like, we just cookie cutter those schools out, like, we just do the same thing over and over. So the, the whole process of working with an architect was distinctly different from the RFP with the contractor. And so when I saw this, I was like, wait, we missed some stages here, but when you explained it to me tonight, I'm seeing that you're saying we need this guy on our team to help get to that blueprint. Like, what we're looking for is a blueprint, right? And then we get to approve that, and, but before we get to the blueprint, there'll be, we're gonna hear from the fire chief, we're gonna hear from the contractor, who knows cost, that we're gonna hear from the architect, and then that, there, and we're gonna hear from, like, Jessica mentioned the things we need in this, and then that's the blueprint that we approve that he's underlining and talking about. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding that. We're gonna approve a blueprint as a city council, and then they're gonna build it.
That's what I'm suggesting to overcome, where I feel like we've kind of been bogged down.
Okay.
And like I said, I would prefer just to let these guys work together, but the council would still have input, and, and that's, I mean, we brought it back here for input, but we really, um, and Jessica sent me something, what, was it two or three weeks ago or something?
Right after our offsite.
Yeah, I did share that with the fire chief, and he said potentially, something like that could work. It was just a rough sketch, but it was basically taking, if you remember the concept we had before, that kind of goes linear along the east side of the building, it was taking that and turning it ninety degrees and going more to the east.
And with the intent and purpose of creating space that's more private for, for our firefighters, so that they're on that corner, so there's not a co-mingling?
And that was actually the, one comment the chief gave, and you can speak if you want to, is maybe it wouldn't make it more private, because it does push them kind of right onto the corner, as opposed to being kind of interior in the block.
Yeah, that's not a busy corner, though. It's very private over there. Go sit in your car, and you kind of are alone. Yeah.
So, I mean, that, that's possible. It's basically taking the same floor plan and turning it ninety degrees, so.
Can I make a motion now?
Yes.
I move to approve the RFP for C, MGC Services for the Alpine Fire Station additional remodel with the following conditions. That no construction will begin until a final concept for the fire station addition and a block plan, per Jason Thielen, has been approved by the city council.
Is there a second?
Thank you, Kelly, that was nice of you. Someone listen.
Any discussion?
Did you second Jason?
I did, yes.
Jason did second it. Any discussion?
I can just say, the first part of that's very easy, because that would never happen, because the council has to approve any bids. So no construction would happen until then. The second part's a matter of how we work with all these others.
Is there any way that you would amend it, that I am concerned that with these other projects, with their timelines, that they're not gonna be ready with the entire block plan and how we want it to be? That if we change it to change the, um, construction to the northeast corner of the city block, without having to do the rest of the plan, I'm just worried, because there's other parties that aren't within the city that are citizen-led, who are very, very capable, but I would like this project to move forward regardless of whether they're able to do things in a timely manner or not.
Ask him.
Would you be amenable to that?
I want the block plan.
That means that you could hold up the fire station, though. Even if they, what about if you limit it to the northeast corner?
Let's make it a priority then. Let's make the block plan a priority. I actually don't think it's a priority by the city right now. And maybe if it was a priority, we'd get it done within a quick timeframe.
It was a priority. We put in for the grant. I don't know what happened, but we did not get the grant.
But couldn't the block plan consist of, of, yeah, this is our public space. This is our public, you know, our safety district space. This is our city hall. Like, a block plan, you know, what does that scope look like? Is it just identifying usage? And then, and our goals behind how this block will be utilized?
I think it's important to have the block plan, but I do feel like it's more important to get this fire station going. I feel like the, longer we wait, the more and more expensive it's getting.
I agree with Carla, and at their last meeting, we, we discussed with the potential for a sculpture garden and the children's library on that corner, neither of those proposals would impact the, um, fire station on that northeast corner. So I, I agree with Carla that I don't think we should wait.
I, I agree with Brent in that, um, to come up with a whole block plan, we almost have to decide yes or no on the library, and I'm nowhere near making a decision on that library. So I don't, like, like, you've taken a lot of time and been dealing with, you know, this boss, the elder self, like, I feel like we're just a long ways away from what we're gonna do about the library. So I don't wanna delay the fire station when if we just isolate it and it fulfills its function, it, that doesn't necessarily-
Okay, I think I'm getting here that people's definitions of a bo- block plan are a lot different than mine. Mine is like, literally, here's the block, here's where the fire station goes, here's city hall. This could be used for a park. This might be used for a library one day. Done. I'm done. I got the block plan. Let's go.
And I just need to suggest that. I think we have that.
That's what I'm saying, like, it doesn't have to be like-
I missed it. Did, did, in the last city council, did they show that on paper?
So in the last city council, they both presented their proposals, and
What areas?
the direction was given to both of those community citizen groups to move forward through the process with planning commission for next steps of approval. So that has begun.
Have we seen that block plan kind of laid out the way you did with the going off the east?
We haven't seen that, but again, that's the north-
We don't have it. We're talking about it here in our meeting.
It's a site plan. That would be a site plan for an agreed-upon site plan for the fire station.
So I, I guess what I wanna know is, what is the concern? Are you worried that the library's gonna be left out, the sculpture garden's gonna be left out? Cause they were here, and they were both fine with the space that I'm understanding with the modification of the driveway or the, whatever it's called, to work around that. Everybody was in agreement on that.
Yeah.
Correct.
So-
I don't wanna, like, to-
I guess, cause I wanna know what the real concern is, and see if we, you know, maybe it's a misunderstanding.
I would say Kelly and Jessica are spot on, and Kelly is spot on what I said. I mean, if we weren't making a stink about it, we would have a road right through here going down the side here, I believe. We're making a stink about it, so I think it's getting a little bit better, and I don't know, Mayor, if you even, that bothered you at all, but it bothered me a lot. And so, doing what Jessica said is a good thing. Doing what Kelly said, this is an area that we've outlined that may be used for a library. We don't have to lay out exactly what it's gonna, this is the area for our sculpture garden and open space. That's enough for me.
Okay.
If, if we get there, at least one of my fears is-
But they did that at the last meeting, though. They, you know-
I haven't seen, I wish I would've seen the diagram that was laid out.
I mean, okay, so maybe, is that the feeling that you got, was everyone kind of staked out? The sculpture garden people kind of didn't overlay, and they said, okay, this area. Um, there was a little bit-
Do you have anything you can pull up, Ryan?
And then the library-
Could we include language with what Kelly's saying?
That's what I'm saying, give me in some homemade-
Just called proposed, proposed plan? So, uh, we could agree and vote
Picturing is-
on a proposed plan that identifies-
I think that'd be good enough.
And, and I think I would add one more condition, which is a full, a site plan. A council agreed-upon site plan for the fire station, cause that is very different than a proposed block plan for-
Well, i- isn't that the first thing of his motion?
He didn't say site plan. Site plan and construction is very different than a proposed block plan.
Okay.
I don't even know what a block plan is. I just drew one, but.
Yeah.
I, I'll say this, you know, you could have the same exact footprint of the fire station with multiple options for a driveway alignment. So I, I wouldn't get hung up on the driveway, because that's a decision that can be made where it goes.
And that's like the easiest thing to change and redo.
Also the last thing.
Yes. Really, it's the building itself.
If I substitute a block plan for site plan and driveway alignment, will that be okay?
That's great. I like that. Do that.
The, the, I just wanna say, the block plan that we talked about last meeting had no accommodation for parking. So that has never been agreed upon, and that is going to be a messy discussion. So I would like to rem- I, if you would amend it away from having a block plan, because that will just delay-
Jason, would you feel comfortable with the northeast quadrant?
Yes, just-
The fire station. Would you be okay with that, with that amendment to the motion?
I'll, I'll do this. I'll amend the motion to say, no construction will begin without city council approving the design of the fire station, the placement of the driveway, and the quadrant in which the fire station belongs.
Are you amenable to that?
Okay.
I thought that sounded great.
Okay. So we've got a motion, an amended motion, and seconded by, um, I'm sorry, amended motion by Councilman Law, seconded by Councilman, um, Thielen. Anything else?
I just wanna pause, because Brian was a magician, and he pulled up what we talked about last week, and then, if, if you're, so you're caught up. I just wanna catch you up before you vote.
Perfect.
Okay.
Brian's a magic magician.
Okay.
We got a motion in a second.
Okay, let's proceed with the roll call vote, since there's no discussion.
Wait, one more point of discussion. So was this part of the motion, including this?
No, that is not.
Projector plan, okay. That is not.
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Annam, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Jessica Smith, yes.
Brad Romer, yes.
Okay.
So just, so I can clarify, I wanna make sure we're a hundred percent on the same page. I, the provision I have that I added in here about the concept plan, can we move forward with the RFP right now and have that kind of go, knowing that the council, and this would, we would bring this early, in any circumstance, to the council to make sure you're on board, um, so we can have these moving at the same time.
So to clarify what you're saying, to clarify what you're saying, we've agreed to the site plan, and we're gonna put the building and the, the driveway in that site plan right now, unless improved differently. But you're saying that, to some degree, the building that was presented to us before is what's gonna go out to RFP right now?
No, no, so that would all be tweaked, and we'd work the fire chief and the architect and the general contractor to massage that if needed, change things around if needed, consider the other alignment.
That was just something that they kind of put together to say, hey, this is what we're thinking. Um, but that's gonna change, right? And with the suggestions that you guys had, because we don't have access to the architect, because the architect basically said, hey, if I'm gonna do anything more, there needs to be some kind of contract. I, you know, I'm doing all this free work, basically. And so the reason, I think you're frustrated, cause you didn't see your changes implemented, but we just didn't have a way to do it. We don't have anyone on staff that can do that kind of work. Um, and the architect can't do anything until we move forward, and who knows, maybe it's not even that architect that we'll work with, cause when we go out for RFP, there could be several-
No, no, we hired one.
I, did we go through with that?
Haven't moved forward, because we're kinda stuck a little bit.
Yes, Bab, Babcock.
Oh, because we don't have the CMGC, that's right. That's right, I'm sorry.
That's why this is forward, to get the CMGC.
So-
Because they have to work together. So like, once they do that, then you'll start seeing some of those things.
And we've already voted, we can't build anything that we haven't approved.
I just wanna make sure we're going down the road the council wants us to, so that's why I asked for clarification.
Yeah, I'm just gonna add this.
No, I, I think what we've only seen is the starting point, and they're gonna get us to the finish line. We're not there yet.
I guess, when I brought this up before to Carla, Carla mentioned, you know, with the, with it going straight through the park, that bothers me. Cause you haven't, if you haven't guessed yet, and Carla's response was, well, the fire chief and the people who build fire departments, they know where it should be. And so if they say it to us, that's probably where we should put it, and I disagree very di- so that's why I'm coming back a little bit harder, cause I felt like it was being put on us without discussion, and this is a benefit of doing what Jessica said.
Honestly, I still probably personally feel that way. I feel like we should leave it to the specialists, but you guys are obviously very passionate about it, and whatever, I don't care where the driveway is. I don't, you know, I do feel like, you know, I feel like we should listen to them, but if you guys feel so passionately about it, then it can change. It does nothing set in stone, other than I would like to get a new fire station built. That's it.
I remember when we signed up Babcock, I went through their proposal, and there's a, there's a part in there, they, they couldn't tell us the fee because they didn't know how much time we were gonna, like, go back and forth, and we're really good at that. And so, um, we haven't passed that phase, right?
Yeah.
So that was their very first thing, was to collaborate with the stakeholders, who's the fire chief, our staff, and, and community members who we represent. So I, I know that that was in our first RFP with Bab, Babcock, am I remembering right?
It is.
Cause I, I remember that distinctly, like, we have, so we have to get to that before we can even, and you're saying, we're gonna add this contractor through RFP process into that phase of collaboration?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the, and the way to address Jason's concern about driveway location is asking for the, the rationale for whatever location they recommend. What are, what are the options? Why are the, what are the reasons? And then we make a decision. I agree with the, the least intrusive is best to maximize utilization of this block. But let's understand what the professionals, what the rationale is, what the options are.
Let's move on. Staff reports. Chief? Ryan?
I don't have anything. Nope. Like I reported, I actually got a text from our potential engineer, so I told him if it wasn't too late, I'd call him tonight, so I'm, I think we're very close.
Yeah, we gotta get this out.
Um, I got a call today from our automated system about city council, and I thought that was just for emergency purposes. Was that just a one-off?
Oh, I did get a call.
I think we have an opt-in thing that you can do for certain, like, if you wanted city council or planning commissioner trails, I think you can opt in.
So it wasn't our emergency system. It was just something I checked somewhere, and now I get a call.
You and, you and the guy with the motorcycle helmet, you're, you're the only two.
But this is the first time it's happened?
Yeah, it was the first time it's happened.
We'll ask Heidi about it.
Okay.
I think we have anything.
Yeah, I don't know. And then, um, just following up, I don't know if, if Ryan, if you're working on this, but the fine for the poppy vandalism, so that we can get signs made and posted, and what we wanna do as a council.
Yeah, we're working with Dawn and Heidi to get it all, it all squared away.
That's it. Kelly?
No.
Chrissy?
All right. Real quick, um, I would love to have an opportunity to, to meet the new employees, and I haven't even met the old employees, so I don't know if they wanna come to dinner one night, or whatever, you know, do something like that.
Yeah.
It's very exciting, and I just, um, would love to, to meet them, and if you guys wanna be there, too. The second thing was, um, I had a out-of-town person mention that none of our signs have ordinances listed, like, like, that, so if we're making poppy signs, like, if there's an ordinance that we quote it, cause his point was, like, how, who enforces that, you know, and so it's easier for people to realize, like, this is not just a suggestion, it's actually a city ordinance. I thought that was a good suggestion, especially when we have parking at Burgess Orchards coming along. Like, if it's by ordinance, I, I don't know what to do, but I thought it was a good suggestion. Those are my, and that's it.
Thank you.
Nothing for me.
Okay. Brent?
Yeah, I was gonna bring this up at our last meeting, but Chief William wasn't there. So right before the meeting, a couple hours before the meeting, I went for a run, and I went to go cross at Ridge Road at the, at the crosswalk there, and there happened to be two, probably middle school girls, standing there with the lights flashing, waiting, and cars were just going by them, and nobody was stopping. So I wondered with the chief, has our police department ever done a targeted crosswalk enforcement operation in Alpine?
He's not here.
And then a, oh, he's not?
He had to leave again, Brian. But I'm with you, dude. I want all people-
Are you guys okay? Are you guys okay with me asking them to do that, like other cities have done?
I, I think it's something we could bring up tomorrow in our PSD meeting.
Ooh, that's good.
Okay.
We need to, we need to do that.
So I've got a couple of really quick things.
So what I, just, just real quick, I, I think with, just along with it, you need to make it, um, an awareness campaign. But I'm, I'm not looking to give tickets out, but, but, uh, put it in the news line, say, this is a date we're going to do it. Just make people aware that it's an issue. Good, thanks.
No, great idea. Um, two things. Um, the school district's name has changed again, but this one is locked in until the new school board decides to change it. And it's Aspen Peaks. Um, they like the symbolism of the ma- many trees coming together with a single root and stronger together. Um, but not stronger to- Um, but not stronger together. And then, um, and then today, um, I attended the groundbreaking for the Huntsman Cancer Center that, um, in Vineyard, and they are projecting in two years they'll have their opening date. One of the largest donors is a family from Alpine City, um, which is pretty exciting. And then, I think that's it, and we're good with time. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.